Okay, welcome everyone to the Board of County Commissioners meeting. Today is July 12th, 2022. It's 10:02 and I would like to ask Tony Lagateta to join us in the salute to the flag. Please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, can we please have the roll call?
Certainly. Von Hartung, Chair, by Zoom.
He's coming later.
Okay. Alexis Hill?
Here.
Bob Lucy?
Here.
Kitty Jong by Zoom?
Present.
Jeanne Herman?
Here.
County Manager Eric Brown?
Here.
Assistant District Attorney Nathan Edwards?
Here.
And I'm Jan Galisine, your county clerk. Madam, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And Mr. Manager, can you take us into the next item?
Item three is an appearance and presentation by Sonia Butler, Detective Washoe County Sheriff's Office on Prevention of Catalytic Converter Theft.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And just as a note for folks who are here for item 13, I don't know if you had read in the agenda that we will not be hearing that until 1:00 p.m. or later, but if you are here for public comments, certainly we want to hear from you. I just wanted to make sure you saw that on the agenda. And I apologize, Sonia. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm, for the record, I'm Detective Sonia Butler with the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. Good morning. I'm Detective Sonia Butler with the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. I'm here because the Washoe County Sheriff's Office has built a short video to introduce the Catalytic Anti-Thief Program. Please enjoy the following video. The Washoe County Sheriff's Office Catalytic Anti-Thief Program. We will begin this presentation by watching two short videos. When a catalytic converter is stolen, it generates revenue on three levels. The street level, where individuals cutting the cats out of parked vehicles. The transporter, who are individuals that commonly use social media platforms to generate purchases from the street level, then transport significant quantities of cats out of Washoe County. And the scrap metal processors, businesses that purchase scrap metal, and in this case, cats, to extract the precious metals contained within the honeycomb of the catalytic converter. Many of these businesses are located outside Washoe County. They are stolen because it's quick and easy and yields high revenue. The average removal of a cat is one to five minutes with common battery-operated tools and yields $100 to $1,000 for the street-level thieves. They are stolen from parked cars, day or night. And targeted vehicles are high clearance vehicles due to easy access to the underbody, fuel-efficient vehicles that contain two or more cats because they yield high revenue. Electric vehicles are not affected due to the lack of cats. And once a cat is stolen, it can cost the victim up to $3,000 in repairs, in addition to the cost of alternative transportation and time. Throughout time, the urban mining of precious metals have increased when the market value of these metals skyrocket. The honeycomb of a catalytic converter contains rhodium, palladium, and platinum. As of July 2022, rhodium is valued at $13,900 per ounce. Palladium is valued at $1,929 per ounce. And platinum is valued at $849 per ounce, whereas gold is valued at $1,733 per ounce. This is why thieves are willing to extract cats right in front of your eyes, as seen in the next two short videos. In 2008, Nevada established laws to address the current trends of urban mining. NRS 205.267, penalties for theft of scrap metal specifically identify catalytic converters as scrap metal. And in Section 3 and 4, it orders restitution to the victim, allowing the determination of the value to include the cost of repairs caused by the theft. While working with the Washoe County District Attorney's Office, we identified a small loophole as this NRS does not contain specific verbiage for possession, making it difficult to prosecute unless you catch the thieves actually extracting the catalytic converters. The Washoe County Sheriff's Office is hoping to close this loophole in the next legislative session. The Nevada revised statute also contains Chapters 647, which requires scrap metal processors to keep accurate and specific purchasing records to include detailed information on the sellers. Additionally, scrap metal processors are subjected to inspections of not only their records, but the products they are receiving. The Washoe County Sheriff's Office developed the Catalytic Anti-Thief Program to combat and deter the 270% increase of theft the community has endured over the last few years. It's intended to discourage thieves through community involvement and awareness. It resembles similar programs that have proven a decrease in thefts. It addresses the crime trend on all three levels as a VIN marked catalytic converter is traceable nationwide. It deters thieves as they do not want to be caught with stolen property. And it enables law enforcement to identify and locate the victims, assist with returning stolen property, and completes the nexus needed to adequately prosecute the criminal act. To participate in the program, visit washosheriff.com. In the "I Want to" section, select "Apply for Catalytic Program." From there, choose either "Individual" or "Business." Fill out the application and press "Submit." An email confirmation will be sent to you shortly after your application is received. You will receive a letter containing your customized VIN stencils and instructions on how to apply and paint your catalytic converter. This letter will also include a list of local automotive service centers who are donating their time and labor to assist the program by helping the community. If you are an automotive service center that would like to participate in the program, please contact Detective Butler at the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. The Washoe County Sheriff's Office Honorary Deputy Association donated money to start the program. It costs less than $2,000 to purchase the equipment and materials needed to launch the program. The average cost to fill individual orders is around 94 cents, and the Sheriff's Office is seeking donations to keep the program running. In the first 30 days after the public announcement, the Sheriff's Office has filled over 750 unique orders, sent out over 1,125 customized VIN stencils, and established partnerships with five local automotive service centers to assist our community with the VIN stencil application. Please visit washosheriff.com to participate in the program.
That completes it. Thank you, Detective Butler. Are there questions for the detective?
No.
Okay. Great information, and I appreciate you getting the word out. We'll make sure we push that out to our socials as well, so folks can learn how they can protect themselves, and we appreciate your work on this.
I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Manager?
Item four is an appearance and presentation from Bobby Thompson, Director, and Tony Lagateta, Chief Operating Officer Reno Air Race Association on the 2022 Steel National Championship Air Races and Air Show, which will take place September 14th through the 18th, 2022.
Von, thank you very much. I'm Tony Lagateta, as you mentioned, Chief Operating Officer at the Reno Air Races. And we're here to kind of talk about the event and give you an overview where we're at. We've made a lot of wonderful strides, which Bobby will talk about, and there's just a few other things that we want to share with you today. I got in late last night, so Bobby graciously agreed to run this thing herself, so I'm going to step back and hand it over to her. Thanks, Bobby.
Boy, I'm glad this podium's not any taller. So, thank you very much, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners. We certainly appreciate your time, and I have to certainly give a shout out to Eric for all his assistance in helping us through this process to be in front of you today. So, as you travel through life, you hear about certain iconic events that happen around the world. So, I want to talk about a few of those. The Paris Air Show, certainly an amazing event. The Daytona 500 Race. The Indianapolis 500 Race. And the National Championship Air Race is better known as the Reno Air Races. Now, the interesting thing about those other three events and several other iconic events is they occur in other places other than Paris, Daytona, Indianapolis. But the Reno Air Races, there's no other place that those air races happen. They're strictly in your county, and we're very pleased to do that. So, we have some highlights from last year's event. While I certainly won't go through each of these individuals, we did want to present those because there were certainly some great highlights, and we're very happy. One of the things that was very interesting was the award presented from the International Council of Air Shows, the Platinum Award, which was for our media growth, which I'll show you some numbers of that in a little bit. And attendance was up, which we're also happy about, and you see increase, increase, increase. So, what's that marketing mean? So, public relations, 208 million. Think about that number. Publicity value, over 8 million. Microsoft reach and Microsoft's value, because there is now a Microsoft game where you can race yourself. But look down there at that social media impression and those numbers and the increase that that represents. Those are very important numbers that all highlight what a wonderful place we all live in, this beautiful county, and it brings great positive attention to this area. So, for 2022, we're going to continue with the social media that we're so successful for. We've engaged a new ticket sponsor that also helps with promotion of the event. They're kind of reaching out and expanding what they do. But as many businesses today, we have some challenges. The higher cost of just doing business, the supply chain issues that many of you have heard about with so many businesses. And probably the one that is most struggling is the insurance. Pardon me. So, here's our lineup, our six classes. If you notice on there, we do have quite a bit of aircraft that are going to be performing. We recently, in June, had the Pylon Race School, which is a safety training that we do every year. If you haven't flown a race recently, or if you're new to it, you must go through Pylon Race School to make sure you can do it safely. That's very critical to us. And then we have this new thing called Stole Drag Racing. And if you haven't seen this, when you're out there, you're just going to go, oh my gosh, is that ever fun? Because it's right in front of the stands, just off the ramp. And when I say drag race, they start on the ground, there's a guy that shows a flag, just like you see in all those 1960 movies. They take off, they fly to the next point, which is still right in front of you, land, spin around, and go back to the start. So, it's a drag race with a 180 in it. It's very fun. People in the stands were just laughing and thoroughly enjoying it. And then for entertainment beyond the races, we have these beautiful aircraft, the F-22 Raptor. And if you have not seen that perform, when that aircraft is in straight and level, all the control surfaces are still moving. Very odd, but fun to watch. And then, of course, we have some civilian acts as well, so we hope you'll be out there to see those things. We're very proud of our STEM education series. It has grown leaps and bounds over recent years. We're reaching out to a great number of children. If you've had an opportunity to go in the tent to set up for these children, you're definitely going to be impressed with not only the level of activity that the kids are having, but how skillful they are at and everything that's offered to them. And you see the number there, 8,500 students and growing. So, we're definitely doing our reach out. I mentioned before that we now have a Microsoft game that's air racing. It's actually pretty good. It's got actual photographs from here. You can probably recognize some of the local scenery and think, hey, I've been there. And it also, of course, introduces a whole new generation because we know those eight-to-12-to-13-year-olds that love those online games can play this and have a great time. And by the time they're old enough to say, hey, Mom, Dad, let's go to those race things. But we still want to continue to reach out and improve our product. And part of that reach out, we've really expanded our scholarship program. We awarded 10 scholarships just this year. And I'll tell you, as part of the selection committee for those scholarship winners, there was an amazing group of young people that applied. Of course, we were restricted to the 10, but the 10 are absolutely fantastic local students. And there they are, and they just have amazing resumes even at their young ages. Some of them already have a private pilot license and are working for another advanced certificate. Some are just getting started, and they are just amazing young people. You should be very proud of these young people in your county. But then I mentioned challenges. So, as you can see here, these were some of the challenges that we had experienced with supply chain, fuel costs up 50%. You probably recognize that from your own vehicles. Tents and barricades, you know, there's a lot of tents out there, and the cost of them gone up 40%. Part of that issue is some of the businesses did not survive the pandemic. Insurance, 40%. When I talk pandemic costs, when we had to cancel the races because of that, Tony just did an amazing job with controlling cost. And you can control cost so far. Unfortunately, that did cost us some personnel, which we couldn't afford to continue on because there was no revenue coming in. So, we've dealt with that. 2021, we came through strong, staffs back up full. But did you know that the impact for the Reno Air Races is $100 million to the local region? $100 million. So, when we come to you for this one-time ask, we're tasking you to make an investment. We feel that with the TOT for the local hotels, casinos, with the airfares, the increase in air traffic, with the individual aircraft that fly in, with all those wonderful tourists that come and spend all the money and then go away. I always liked that part. We think it's a really good investment for the county. So, we'd like for you to consider that we had these unexpected costs from the pandemic, and if you can find your way free to help contribute to some of the increased costs we have as a result, and the insurance, we would certainly appreciate it, and I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. To the board, are there any questions?
Madam Chair, I mean.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson, Mr. Lagateta, can you tell, talk to me about some of the community involvement that Air Races participates during the event and after the event in regards outside of the STEM, but some of the other issues that, working with veterans and with the local businesses and the communities, how does the Air Races give back to the community in that shape and form 360 days a year?
Well, since Tony does that on a daily basis, I'll let him answer.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. We do, as you said, give back on a daily basis throughout the year. We have a number of nonprofit groups who we work with and make significant contributions to their group. 99s, for example, who do flight scholarships for women. The Elks Lodge, I didn't remember the number, but there are a whole bunch of different ones, lots of aviation. We work with the EAA Local Chapter. And those are both financial donations during, for, you know, kind of service exchange during the event. We also give tickets to roughly 100, or it might even be more than that, institutions for silent auction-type raffles and things like that. And when we have looked at the total value of just the financial from those two pieces that goes back, it's well over $100,000 that we give back into the community in that way. We've also participated, whenever we have opportunity, which has obviously been a little less the last couple of years, in other education or events with kids through the Reno ACES, for example, every opportunity we get to participate with the community. So, those are a few of the ways that we participate throughout the year, in addition to the education pieces and the scholarship, which is new this year. Also, for the last couple of years, we've been working with NVBAA and Grad. They're based out of Las Vegas, but they're Nevada institution, and they work with kids. They do free Part 107 training, which is drone pilot training, so people can learn that, and they can actually use that as a career, as a trade. And we've sponsored that for the last two or three years. I'm trying to remember if it started in '20 or '21. So, we've been the primary sponsor for that, giving free education to kids to become drone pilots. That's a few of the event, of the items you asked about.
Wonderful. And I do believe NASA does have a program at, for the drone pilots and the drone program at the Reno Stead Airport as well. Do you guys work with them at all or participate in any of their programming?
We have not recently. We worked with NASA, they were part of our STEM education program in past events, but it's been a few years since we've worked directly with them.
Okay, great. And then, you know, when we talk about the impacts and the challenges that the races have seen over the last decade, you know, it's been challenging, obviously, from a safety standpoint, from a different. Can you talk to us about some of the challenges that you are seeing going into this year's event?
Absolutely. You know, we did, we've had an incredibly safe run. Obviously, we had, 2011 was a tremendous tragedy, and, you know, it's one of those things where it's part of our history, but it doesn't define us. We did everything in TSB and the FAA wanted us, asked us to do, and it's been incredibly safe. That is our primary focus every year. That's the first, the first sign of how did the event go? You know, was it safe? From there, then we move on to, you know, the local impact and the economics and all that, all that fun stuff. So, the last 10 years have been extremely challenging for a lot of different ways, but over the last few years, we've made a ton of progress. And in 2021, we actually threw a lot of the changes, the cuts, the increases, and the identifying all the, all the issues that we faced last year, we were actually able to turn the largest profit that we had in 20 years. That was wonderful. However, there was a lot of time leading up to that, and one of the slides actually showed the insurance in particular, that we were making up for as well. So, while our kind of line coming out of last year was, we've turned a corner, but we're not out of the woods yet. So, going into this year, we had a plan, everything was together, we could see, costs are up for everybody, so we knew that was going to be an issue. But then about two months ago, we got a call from the airport authority letting us know that a excess liability policy that they get every year for a very, very low cost, and it's really just an add-on to their normal policy, they were unable to get. So, they said, look, we, we have to have this for you guys to have your license, and we can't directly get it. So, we sent, we set to task to go get this insurance policy for them. We tried to find it in their name, of course, because that would be a lot less expensive than insuring ourselves for this amount of money. At the end of the day, we had to actually get the policy and add it to ours, because it's over and above our normal policy. That is a big result of why we're here. That's actually resulting in an increase in our insurance cost, well, now two months prior to the event, of half a million dollars. So, that is, that is the biggest challenge that we face right now, and it's in such a short time period before the event that, you know, we're going out and we're asking everyone that might be able to help.
Great. So, that half a million dollar rider that is in addition for that now the Air Races did not anticipate in their budget, in their budget process, you're, you're in a fundraising mechanism to raise these dollars to keep the event, the legacy event alive and running within our community. Thank you for your, thank you for the answers, and I think those are my questions, but I'd like to make a quick statement. Air Races are tremendously impactful to our community. As we point out here in northern Nevada, we're very fortunate during the summer and fall months to have these wonderful legacy events from, usually kicks off with the Reno Rodeo, goes through the fall with the hot air balloon races, hot August nights, and then usually concludes with the Reno Air Races. And it's a phenomenal event, and it's very different, as Bobby pointed out, than other air shows that are across the country. Many air shows provide the ability for military demonstrations and planes to be seen and, you know, aerobatics, whatnot. But you will not see the Reno Air Races anywhere else than Reno and at the Stead Airport. And being that it is in, in what I believe, one of our most beautiful ports of the county, to watch those, those best event out there, it's phenomenal. And to have that ability to run this process. And it's more than just an event. It's more than just a community event. I want to talk about the economic development. As part of the RSCVA, as participating in the RSCVA for the last seven years, it has been interesting to see that not only do we see communities come, but veterans, this is a huge, huge attendance for veterans and those that are still active in military service but, or retired from the military service. And they, the veterans benefit from this tremendously. I know VFW utilizes this as a fundraising event for their, for their fundraising during the event to make sure that they can continue to service and, and help veterans through that facet. Many airline executives will travel to this event, over the period of the event, to witnesses and participants. witnesses and participate. And when we bring airline executives in from American Airlines, Delta, Southwest, we, when we entertain and show them our region and our ability of our airports, not just Sted, but also the Reno Tahoe International, it helps us to procure brand-new, new routes, which we constantly are trying to add to our Reno Tahoe Airport, to continuously add, which, which ultimately brings new business growth. I've had personal conversations with many CEOs, COOs from Alaska Airlines, and, and because of this event, it gives us that opportunity to really sit and do what I would consider business development with those individuals, and bring those individuals to see our region and see how beneficial it is for them to, to add service to our community. So air service is a continuing part of our growth, and it's more than an air show. This is definitely an opportunity for individuals to come and see and participate. So the room tax is one part of it, but what a lot of people don't understand that is, is the individuals that come and participate are on a, on a higher level, the decision-makers that really can help change the landscape for business community through, through an event like this, very different than any of the other events that we do, that we do host in the, in the north. And so, and when you talk about the outreach of this event, being a father and having two young children and watching Disney quite often, planes, you know, one of the opening scenes to planes was the Reno Air Races. And so, I mean, this is something that is dramatically impactful and known very well around the world. The RSCVA does contribute quite a, quite a bit of money through marketing and different opportunities through the Air Races, but I would urge this board to continue to see. Now, obviously, these are big numbers, and the CARES grants are challenging to, to procure and make sure that those are available and those funds are available, and we have to be cautious about how we spend those dollars. But from the standpoint of truly looking at the reason for those CARE dollars and re-establishing business routes and community involvement and whatnot, I think this fits well within our community. And so I would urge this board to continue to look for opportunities, and the manager to look for opportunities, to support the ongoing operations of the Reno's, Reno Air Races and the Reno Air Race Association, and all the work that they have done. They work tirelessly to do this, and it's, like I said, it's a great community event that's open to everybody, and I just really hope that that we can continue to help elevate your program and continue to grow the program. I look forward to the F-35 demos every year, so that's one of my big favorites. But those are my comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucy. Commissioner Herman, do you have anything? Okay. Kitty, anything on the line?
No, thank you.
Okay. I, I agree. I think that we need to figure out a way to support, especially the education program. I think that that falls well within our goals of the, our grants, and I know that you've been given the link to apply, correct? So hopefully y'all can get that done by the 15th, and we'll, we'll be looking to see how we can support you, and thank you for bringing such a great, positive event to our community, and I'm, I'm excited to work with you again, Tony. It'll be great.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much. Really appreciate your time and your consideration and your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Manager, will you take us to the next item?
Item four, I'm sorry, item five is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Madam Clark?
Yes. First up, we have Barb Fenny, followed by Elise Weatherly.
Another person on the list, please.
No, you're up right now.
I just want to address the ongoing saga of the Reno Tahoe Business Gateway TMRPA meeting, 12/9 of 21. This is about the Mogul development. As noted, Table 33 is located in Policy RC2, which provides a translatable land use between each jurisdiction. The table does not specify the accompanying zone, as that parameter is controlled by local judici, juditions, sorry. It is the proposal, the, in this proposal, the city of Reno master plan land use designation is mixed employment, which translates to commercial land use designation in Washoe County, Page 3. The Conformance Review, Page 4, Regional Planning Staff Recognize that both commercial and industrial designations are acceptable uses of land use within Tier 2. Staff further recognizes the long history of planned industrial use on the site. However, the absence of a specific master plan amendment request, the subject partial will have a land use as set forth in the translatable table found in the Policy RC2. Your Agenda, 1212, states the Board of County Commissioners may adopt the proposed master plan amendment, may further modify the proposed master plan amendment, and refer the matter back to the Planning Commission for its report in accordance with NRS 2782204, or may deny the proposed amendment after the public hearing. Residents occupy most of Mogul. We do not have heavy industry anywhere in Mogul or mega buildings. Only a storage facility and a small rock processing plant. We have had low traffic numbers, do not have semi-truck deliveries, and rarely does anyone use Mogul Road for these two facilities. Residents of the area and recreational use are the main benefactors. The road is owned by Union Pacific Railroad. Mogul does not have the space, Mogul Road does not have the space for sidewalks, compounding an already dangerous situation. In the meantime, Washoe County is pursuing two trailheads at the east and west sides of Mogul. Where will the entrance and the exits for this facility be? Do, does the developer have an easement through Union Pacific, or will they continue to trespass on Union Pacific property? This development with an industrial zoning is not compatible with the current and future usages of this area. If you lived in Mogul...
Would you want to have serious potentially deadly consequences?
Thank you, Barb.
Next up, we have Elise Weatherly, and while she's approaching, if any of you are waiting for agendas, there are more printed in the back of the room.
Am I good?
You're good.
Okay. Good morning. I just wanted to let you know I dressed up for you guys. I wore my holy jeans. There's a story behind that. It has to do with Highland Ranch Homeowners Association. I wore my Whitewater t-shirt that has booze all over it because they're the backstabbers. I wore my glasses with the duct tape because I wanted to give a thumbs up to Kroll and Lighthouse Optometrist. So you guys are probably wondering, why am I doing this? Am I a goody-two-shoes? Am I just like trying to rack up brownie points? No. I'm doing this because of something that somebody on True Crime said. She goes, don't give up on justice. It took them 15 years for the DNA testing to catch up to where they could find out who it was that murdered one of her loved ones. So basically, what I'm trying to tell everybody is that we don't just disappear when we die. Oh, by the way, the statistics are pretty high that we're all gonna die. All right? Accountability. I'm all for accountability. What I've done over the years is like, have I changed? I did an assessment of myself because of some bad reports about me. I'm going, well, did I change because of that brain tumor in 2015 where the doctors told me I had four months to live? It's been seven years. It just sort of disappeared? No, I haven't changed. I've become more vocal. I've become more mouthy, because I only have three minutes. I've got a lot to tell you in three minutes. So what I will say is, during my investigation, there are only two politicians that I have known in this community that I would say, let's replace you. Two. Two doctors in this community that I would say, let's replace you. Let's, don't go to you. If you diagnose a terminal brain tumor as anxiety, don't go to him. If you go to a cancer care specialist that says, well, I haven't got a clue why your tumor's gone, let's have some more chemo, and it nearly kills you, don't do it. I've only known one cop, constable on patrol, that I would say, I would have him removed. He got promoted instead, at least it saved his really cool partner from having to worry about it. Most of the lawyers in this community, I would take a spiritual front-end load or two and dump them, because if anybody is only in it for themselves, for money, for their name, for their esteem, you think that's gonna do them a whole lot of good, since they're gonna die anyway? Have I changed? Do I know that we don't just disappear when we die? Yeah, I know that. How do I know that? My boyfriend, Jay Weinsdorf, before I knew he was dead, I had a dream about him. He was perfected. By the way, he was a pilot. He flew his own plane. It went down. I have been involved in volunteer work, Sparks Christian Fellowship, Air National Guard, Secret Witness, Center Street Mission, Faith House Ministries, CBC Summit Excel. Where are they now? Who knows? All I would ask these people is, who's your boss? You know, you can only have one of two bosses. I go for the high guy. Why? Because he's proven himself faithful. And if you don't know me by now, you will never, never, never know me. Thanks.
Michael Craig, followed by Alice Zirkowski.
Thank you for letting me speak here today. The point at which I'm, I'm speaking is about the Donovan Pitt and the impact it's gonna have on the community of the Donovan Pitt. This is the current businesses, as well as developments that are going into the Donovan Pitt area, or anything north that is from Egyptian Park or Egyptian Drive north going up the valley. The result is, you can see on the, on the left-hand side, there's already 3,200 homes that are already slated for build and are in the building process. That can be expanded to the lower number, which is 478, 4787. That's how many additional homes that are going in. When I did some research on this, it was really clear, when I looked at the master plan, subsection 1.2, that accounts for, right now, that there's only supposed to be 1,500 homes going in by the year 2025, and that would be measured by this team or a sub-team of this to, to ensure that the safety and the infrastructure was built out. This is woefully unacceptable at this point in time to myself, as well as the rest of the community. Right now, that subsection and, and seventeen, subsection 17.3, that's E through F, also are in, not compliant. You're talking about the infrastructure. There is only one firehouse that's at La Posada, right next to the Safemart. That is a three-man crew, and that is supporting everything going north. And that is highly safety-oriented as a problem that we have in this community. So if we're talking that we build out to the, to the tune of 4787, you're talking in excess of the intake of revenues will be at $23 million. If we stay at the 3,211, you're talking about $16 million of added revenue. I think at this point in time, you have to put a moratorium in place up there until the infrastructure can be utilized through these additional funds and through the active, hopefully, the active part of this, is that you will actually see that the infrastructure is woefully inadequate. Okay? I have also left a report here for you of my findings. Thank you very much.
Alex Zirkowski, followed by Roger Edwards.
I'm here to speak basically because of the fire hazard in the Shadow Ridge community. I don't know how, if you know about it, last summer, there was a fire in the Donovan Pitt, and the only thing that saved us was there was no wind, so the embers didn't go around. And my wife rousted me at 1:00 in the morning and showed it to me. I was going, what a lucky break that was. I went and notified my neighbors and stuff. But I was just thinking, I think there's a prejudice or a bias. Everybody seems to think any fires are gonna head, start from the east and head west. But if, I don't know, do you folks have a map of where we are, Shadow Ridge? Okay, if you look at, what happens if there's a fire to the west of us and starts going east? Look at that road. There's only one way in and out. We might be trapped there. And now that's 400 homes. Now you want to add another 400 homes to that. That's just, I'm going, my God, what are we supposed to do in case something like that happens, and especially at night? The second point I'm just really curious about is, if I have a jug of water, a gallon jug, it goes out at a certain rate. If I have a two-gallon jug of water, it goes out at the same rate. Now, you can hasten that rate by putting a pump in. And if this, I guess amendment goes through, or whatever it's called, I'm just curious, what kind of pump do you plan to have in that community or subdivision to hasten the flow of traffic out of there? Thank you.
Roger Edwards, followed by Will Brown.
No clapping.
Roger Edwards, for the record, 49-year resident of Washoe County, past planning commissioner, past regional planning commissioner chairman. Been involved in this county for a long time, and I wouldn't have it any other way. But, you know, as a 27-year resident of Golden Valley, we got a really problem out there. We put in recharge program because our wells were getting high in nitrate levels, and we were concerned about being mandated to replace our wells with city water. Well, we did too well on our recharge program. Now we're flooding our lower homes. We put so many acre-feet of water into the ground, and our aquifer actually held it. It's unheard of, I know, but nobody thought about it. All of our engineers and specialists that were helped design this program never thought about that, but it's a real thing now. And we can't have our septic systems flooding in the lower homes. We've got a couple hundred homes down there that are in jeopardy of losing their sewer systems, and that would be a mandated hookup to the community system also. This is, this is a travesty when all we need to do is lower the water level in our aquifer. I'll guarantee you, all those construction guys would love to have extra water for their water tanks to keep the dust down and stuff. And we got $700,000 in our, in our fund right now. We could afford to punch a 40-foot well and pump that water out and supply those people. Lower our, our water levels, our water tables at five feet or something in Golden Valley. And in the meantime, we shut our system down six years ago, but we're still paying 2266 a month, $13,000 a month from our 600 homes. For what? Don't tell me it costs $13,000 to send out the bills and, and take my check and put it in the count. I know it doesn't. We're just rolling up money for nothing. I'm here every month talking about this. You guys made the, made up the water recharge program. You can certainly change the text of how the money is collected. You can suspend any part of this program you want, and I recommend, and I plead with you guys to do that. This is nonsense. We've rolled up over almost a million dollars, $930,000 in unnecessary charges since 2016. And are you still waiting on Dwayne Smith to give you guys a, a recommendation? Come on, make it happen, please.
Will Brown, followed by Kay Dyer.
I cannot hear names being called, so I'm asking that you please do not clap. Thank you.
I can hear, so I won't.
Will Brown, you're up next.
Well, I've been a resident for 67 years. I want Americans to understand the AR-15 rifle. It was designed to be a military weapon and it does the job very well. It was designed to kill opposing military soldiers. It isn't meant to be a civilian home, school, or a job, or any other purpose except military. In the mid-1920s, all the way to the 1960s, the Thompson submachine gun was the pick of gangsters and many people that apparently decided they could not obey the laws of the land. The Thompson was outlawed by the government. Bonnie and Clyde and people like them used the machine gun to overpower stores, police, banks, and robberies of other people. It was outlawed by the government and it's outlawed for the average people. The AR-15 is probably more deadly than the Thompson submachine gun. There is approximately 8 million in private citizens' hands. We are the murder capital of the world and the AR-15 is largely the tool that is used. If American citizens are to live a life that is somewhat safe, the AR-15 must become extinct from any non-military purpose. It is not a gun that sportsmen need. Try to picture what it's like to be a grandparent or a parent and have your children slaughtered at school by a gun like that. They're not necessary. They're not good for the public's benefit and they're not guarding the nation either. But this has to be changed quickly. You want to go down? Try to picture what your life would be like if you go down to identify your child in a school where some guy has shot 20 kids.
Kay Dyer, followed by Emanuela Heller McNagel. Kay Dyer.
Dear Commissioners, my name is Emanuela Heller McNagel. I want to address point 13, Mogul Master Plan Amendment. And I want to ask you as the board, are you able to make the following findings for the master plan amendment as required? Can you make finding one consistency with master plan? The amendment, I think, is not consistent with the master plan because the city has put a mixed employment land use over the industrial zoning. This translates into commercial land use in the county. Can you make finding two? The proposed amendment will provide for land uses compatible with existing or planned adjacent land uses and will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or welfare. While existing land use, Mogul is mostly residential since more than 100 years. Planned land use, there's an open space trailhead coming up. And public health, safety, or welfare, let's look at this westbound on-ramp. It is too short for existing traffic already. It should be around 1,500 feet long. It's only 230 feet long. And this is absolutely reflected in this crash data that we have already, where we see three times more crashes at the westbound on-ramp than after the eastbound on-ramp. And any additional industrial traffic will have detrimental effects there on our safety. And can you make finding three, response to changing conditions? There have been neighborhoods going in around all over West Reno with new traffic clogging I-80, adding more to this dangerous on-ramp there. And can you make finding four, available facilities, what you've heard about the westbound on-ramp? We also have an underpass there that is too narrow and a dangerous intersection and a narrow county road. Do you think Mogul has the facilities to handle more traffic, especially industrial trucks and 18-wheelers? Can you make finding five, is this a desired pattern of growth industrial in a residential area? While in 19, the city of Reno said no and unanimously turned down the development because of incompatibility of surrounding areas and traffic. Can you make all three general verdi plan findings? I cannot. The character statement, private or public development should respect scenic rural heritage of the area and the conservation of scenic cultural resources. The scenic view here right above the development site, where this sign used to be to point out about the cultural resources, prehistoric Patrick Cliff, Washoe Indian artifacts, all this will be lost. The character is supposed to be rural, non-commercial, not even to speak about industrial. I can really not make the three general verdi findings. Thank you.
Chris Ingstrom, followed by Larry Ingstrom.
No clapping. I will ask folks who are clapping to be removed.
My name is Chris Ingstrom. I'm here as I was a month ago to ask you to vote against the blanket okay with this industrial zoning for the Gateway Project to proceed. This time it's item number 13. The day after our last meeting, I got COVID, which was surprisingly not an easy week for me. While I was down, I started binge watching The Good Wife. You may know the show from years past. I didn't watch much TV back then, but I was catching up. Anyway, I know it's TV and we can't assume that they're being totally realistic, but seeing how the lawyers are always working to find this loophole and that technicality no matter what, so they can win for their client really hit home after, for me, after our loss to S3 lawyer Garrett Gordon and his tactics in front of you at that last meeting. We all acknowledged that this was just about the grading and yet we all knew and know that there's a project in mind. We saw the project ourselves in a virtual meeting before it was suddenly not a project and the whole just about grading tactic seemed to be the same sort of lawyer work that we see on TV. And now we are actually hearing rumors that a parcel of that land is up for sale. So that opens up another concern about what will really be developed on this land. But I digress. Today, it's about industrial zoning and master planning. We all know that you, the county, are worried about getting sued if you decide to consider the master plan and rule against industrial zoning. And yet, if we look at all the findings that support our position against industrial, we are hoping that you are willing to fight the good fight, which is a sequel, and do what is right for the people, your constituents, and the community and the county and not fear the lawyer threats. I'd also suggest you consider, if not this lawsuit, lawsuit, then what of possible others? Again, those lawyer games. Who is to say the county won't be sued for someone living in the area if you don't address all the findings correctly? Or maybe a cyclist who can no longer safely use the bike or trail with traffic concerns? Maybe a school bus driver who can't merge onto I-80 safely with a bus full of students with the added traffic from an industrial project? Or let's hope not, but if someone were injured or killed on Mogul Road due to industrial traffic on the Union Pacifics Road with two train crossings having no safety arms? Seems to me from my TV law education that you have been notified of the dangers involved and if you choose not to do what is right and safe for the people, your constituents, you might also be liable. Most importantly, please remember that the proper zoning of this land is far more important than appeasing S3 and Blake Smith. Who is to say that he will actually go through with his plans and actually purchase it? Or if he does already own it with no records for us to find, that he won't sell it to an even higher bidder and we end up with no controls on a project under industrial zoning that thus could be something like a factory farm or a jet fuel factory or who knows what else could be incompatible with the surrounding homes? I ask you again, do what is right and necessary to keep this land from being zoned industrial.
Larry Ingstrom, followed by Renee Rosentis.
I'm here to speak in opposition to item 13 in the agenda, the Mogul Gateway Project. Let's make sure this is going. There it goes. The video here, created by Mogul resident Karen Nidhold, begins with the current aerial shot of the Greater Mogul Corridor. The Truckee River is in light blue. I-80 is just to the north of the river and the railroad tracks are in between the two. You will see as the video progresses, a timeline of growth in the area and that the growth is almost entirely residential. These are the sections you see highlighted in white that keep popping up. After the completion of I-80 in 1974, the residential spread grew exponentially. By 1990, the area is a fully developed residential community with no businesses except for the one small mini storage, which is highlighted in red. As you can see, the residential nature of the growth continues unabated until the present day, including only a church and a couple of Truckee Meadows water facilities and a power plant substation, none of which present any traffic problems or incompatibilities for the residents. The remaining spaces in this quadrant are controlled by the city of Reno, the lower-right dark green, Washoe County, scattered areas in a bit lighter green, state of Nevada in even lighter green in the lower middle area, and the federal government in the very bright neon green. And finally, the black areas are the homeowner association holdings. In short, to put a large industrial zone space, shown here in red, in the middle of this quiet residential area is nonsensical and dangerous and it's incompatible with several findings of the general verdi area master plan. It is not responsive to residential growth and the addition of large trucks will be dangerous for pedestrians, especially children, and will overwhelm the already inadequate traffic flow design, particularly the five-way intersection near the train tracks and also the westbound I-80 on-ramp. Please vote against the proposal to develop this land for industrial purposes so that all residents who have moved into this peaceful and quiet area are kept out of harm's way.
Next up, we have Renee Rosentis, followed by Charles Harkins.
Please put my comments into the record. My name is Renee Rosentis. Thank you. And I live in a rural area also and I'm amazed at all of the traffic. I'm speaking to this agenda 13 also, but I'm also speaking just countywide. You know, it's just unbelievable, the building that has gone on. My understanding is there's a lot of California contractors that are hired, not our local contractors, and they're willing to bid a lot of money and offering all of you perks so that they get chosen to build and without any consideration to the people, where they're building, road access. And so why is this panel approving the building when we don't have the access, safe access for emergency vehicles and just in and out and just school buses? Why are they, why is this body approving it? Is there something that you are personally getting so that this is continuing to happen? So anyway, I just wanted to throw that in the mix. Thank you.
Diana Christensen, followed by Don Christensen.
I'm Diana Christensen and I'd like to address item number 12. Probably take a different stand than many of my neighbors. I'm very concerned about the zoning of what is currently the Donovan Pitt and I will speak in favor of rezoning that as a residential because I am very much afraid that if Mr. Donovan cannot get any money for selling it as a residential, then he will sell it to somebody who will turn it into a really active pit. It has been a very friendly neighbor so far, but there is nothing to stop any owner from starting an asphalt batch plant back there. There is nothing to stop them from putting a cement back pit, nothing that would stop them from increasing the number of truck trips up that Donovan Pitt Road as much as necessary in order to get what they would consider a reasonable value for what they might pay for that pit. However, as I speak in favor of changing that to residential, I would like to see this board place restrictions upon that property so that they cannot go and create an even bigger issue back there. And I would like to see it zoned low-density suburban, which is one acre lots as opposed to the .5 acres that they are asking for. I would like to see, if possible, that they would be responsible for placing a light at Pyramid and Horizon View. If possible, I would like to see them responsible to cut a road across the back of our property where the subdivision ends and take a road through to Caia de la Plata, which currently has a light and would allow a better means for traffic to come in and out of the community. I would like to see calming placed on Horizon View to help cope with the number of things. I would like to see construction noise and dust held to a minimum. I would like to see the construction traffic traveling up the Donovan Pitt Road as opposed to going through the neighborhood during the time of construction. Like to see them become very cognizant of dust abatement and blowing construction debris. And I would like them to be responsible to replace some of the native plants and things so that we do not have dust after they leave and have completed their project. And for this reason, I would like to see that that property be changed to a residential to protect all the residents in that area from what currently could come and devastate our neighborhoods. Thank you so much.
Next up, we have Don Christensen, followed by Pat O'Brien.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. For the record, I'm Don Christensen, rather related to the lady that just spoke. I have lived in Washoe County for 45 years, mostly in Sparks, but for the last 10 years in the Shadow Ridge subdivision. I was there before the rider people even showed up. I bought my home from the previous contractors. When I bought out there, it was incredibly beautiful. It was 13 homes that were out there. I knew they were going to eventually build more, but what's happened in that 10-year period is, as you all well know, and I just want to point out that traffic and infrastructure on Pyramid Highway has just become insane. It's dangerous and I understand that it's a state highway, a lot of state money, go south. We're not exactly the highest priority, but if we're going to continue to build, and I think that's inevitable, we need to address the infrastructure. Fire protection particularly, big deal. and to address the growth in this area. Growth is inevitable. I'm not happy about what Mr. Donovan wants to do with his land, but it's his land, and there are many worse things than the development of homes that could go in there, as my wife pointed out. Without any further permitting, we could have a batch plant there and an increase in the mining of the Donovan Pit. And growth's inevitable. I understand that. I'm not a NIMBY kind of a guy. And I think economics will slow down the growth in that part of our valley. It's just not the runaway growth that we have had. And I think with little reasoning and your good guidance, we'll have a better community. Thank you.
Pat O'Brien, followed by Norma Saraceno.
Hi, good morning. My name is Pat O'Brien, live out in Mogul. I'd like to speak in opposition to the Reno-Tahoe Business Gateway. Specifically, there is the Carcione Open Space in the Canapa Ranch Open Space Recreation Access Plan for a Washoe County Regional Park that is proposed to be built right across the street from this S3 Reno-Tahoe Gateway. And my question to you is, well, actually, this recreational access plan would be a system of hiking and mountain bike trails, fishing and water sports that would take place right at that particular point. And my question would be, or actually, I find this potential regional park to be similar to the Ballardini Ranch and the Hidden Valley Regional Parks. Would you, would a project similar to this, Reno-Tahoe Gateway, be approved right across the street from those two beautiful parks? I just can't imagine that that could happen, and I would really hate to see the potential new park be ruined by this Reno-Tahoe Gateway. Also, I would encourage each of you to go out and take a spin around the entrance ramp to the I-80 westbound. It's, and even in a fairly powerful vehicle, I have difficulty attaining highway speeds. You start at 20 miles per hour. You do a quick, tight circle and very tight circumference, and you cannot get up to speed. And I can't imagine more truck traffic trying to do that. And if you go off the road there, you go off the road onto the overpass and onto the road below where people are walking into the neighborhood. Thank you very much for hearing me. I hope you will not approve this project. Thank you.
Norma Saraceno, followed by Catherine Snedeker.
Good morning. I'm here to talk about the Donovan Ranch and the pit.
Ma'am, please adjust your microphone down. Thank you.
Okay. Approving the Donovan Pit rezoning from general rule to low-density suburban will put a chokehold on our water supply. Studies being done in Palomino Valley area to use aquifers as storage to supply water to Spanish Springs. What happens when these aquifers run low or dry up? There won't be enough water to properly supply all of the current homes, let alone future planned developments. This will cause increase in water rates and perhaps water shortages. 2,463 homes have been approved within the last 10 years in Spanish Springs. 3,200 new homes in line to be built, and this can go up as high as 4,787. When is enough enough? Horizon View Road has 39-plus cracks that range in between 1 inch to 1 and 1/4. According to the master plan, SS 1.2, the policy growth level in Spanish Springs suburban character management area is 1,500 new residential unit land of capacity through 2025. We have already exceeded this residential land use of 1,500 new homes to date. Washoe County Development Code, Division 4 Development Standard Contents, Article 436 Street Standards Designs, Section 110.436.20, General Requirements. Item C, ingress and egress. Unless otherwise approved by the county of engineer, at least two means of ingress and egress built to the county standards shall be provided to serve subdivision development. Shadow Ridge has only one road, Horizon View, for ingress and egress. What happens if an emergency occurs and the residents have to evacuate due to a fire, flood, or whatever the emergency is? This amount of traffic trying to enter Pyramid from high, I'm sorry, to enter Pyramid from Horizon View will be not only disastrous and dangerous, but also life-threatening. Thank you.
Catherine Snedeker, followed by Lori Leonard.
For the record, my name is Catherine Snedeker, and I want this put in the agenda, word for word, in accordance with NRS 241. I read the rules and regulations from the Health Department on burning and what their regulations are, and I saw the stupidest thing I've ever seen on there. You have to buy a $33 permit to be exempted. They say you don't need a permit. I'm not buying a permit. I'm going to be burning my wood-burning stove, and I am not buying a permit. I'm just going to do it because that's my right. Because I'm a non-resident, non-person, unenfranchised, natural woman, meaning I am not a legal fiction like you are, like Washoe County is, like the state of Nevada is. I am a natural woman, and I, my abode and my domicile is in the state, is in Nevada state. Also, as far as the clapping goes, there's nothing in the rules that says you can't clap. So if you don't want us to clap, put it in the frickin' rules. Otherwise, we can do whatever we want. This is your corporate business meeting. You appease the people by pretending to listen to them. The only thing you care about is your business deals, like in Verde, like in Spanish Springs. So right now, we got Tomo testing the water because they're going to take our Palomino Valley Aquifer and ship it into Spanish Springs. Is that so you can put in 6,000 more homes? Is that why you need it? Because that's theft of our water basin in disguise. We don't want the shitty water that you're going to pump out to us. We don't want it. If that shitty water affects my private well that I own outright and the city can't touch and the county can't touch and the state can't touch, I'm going to be suing you people for taking away my livelihood, my sustainability that you like to promote so much. Oh, this is sustainable development. Nothing is sustainable. And this county better get some intelligent people here because what you're doing is criminal. What are they telling you to say there, Bob? I know they're writing you little messages. Keep it up. Your job is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the people. That's your fiduciary obligation, and you do everything except that. And we are sick of it. We are sick of you. We're sick of your arrogance, and we're sick of you representing developers and not the people who live in those developments. Please, stop it.
Lori Leonard, followed by Janet Butcher.
Okay, I'm not quite sure how to connect this. Thanks, Emo.
Yeah, sure. Have her email it to me. Thank you. Good. Have her email it to me.
Madam Clerk, can we help?
Ryan's coming down.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Lori Leonard, and I have lived in Mogul for approximately 10 years. And I, my neighbors have...
Mention that industrial development zoning is not compatible with the current or future plans for this area. As noted earlier, Mogul is almost 98% residential area, and then it also provides access to our public lands and the outdoors. It's a very narrow road on Mogul Road to get across the river to these public lands. Safety and access is really like one of the number-one concerns. In the blue there, that's the residential area, and in the green is public land, so the BLM and county parks. And then the red is the one and only access route to the parcel in question, and that is an incredibly dangerous intersection. This is a video of the one and only way to get in and out of this, to this parcel. And while in the past, the representatives for the development have stated that the railroad tracks are not relevant to this area, they very much so are because, again, this is the one and only way in and out of this parcel. And essentially, if a train is going by on the train tracks here, if there's two or three cars that have to be stopped for that, it literally blocks the entire five-way intersection. So this is looking in the direction where those parcels exist. This is looking to I-80. And then behind me, it gets pretty interesting in this area, is where the Mogul residents access on and off the ramp. So that's a car that came just right behind me and another one. And so, again, if there was two more cars behind me, that entire intersection would be blocked up. So adding truck traffic to this already dangerous intersection is incredibly dangerous. This is also, I'll reiterate, the location where people are trying to access public lands. There has been an accident there in the past, and that's even with the limited regional access here. This is somebody coming from across the railroad tracks where the county parks are looking to develop trails, and I just backed up into that five-way intersection. From above there, you can't see a vehicle coming up in either direction, and there's space for just one vehicle. So if there was a train coming, which, again, there are no gates if a train are coming, and they can come in either direction. So it's incredibly dangerous, as it is now, much less with any truck traffic behind you. That there was the county parks land, which they're looking to put together, and they have designs for trails at this time. So this is, again, there's already people using this area for recre...
Janet Butcher, followed by Kirk Ariano.
Janet Butcher, for the record. Please enter my comments into the record. Why are audits important? An audit is important as it provides credibility to a set of financial or data statements or processes and procedures. And it gives the shareholders confidence that the accounts are true, fair, and credible. It can also help to improve entities' internal controls and systems. There are software audits, procedure audits, and process audits. I bring this up because I want to address the incompetence in procedure and process of the 2022 election primary season held in Washoe. Using the same colored ballot bags to transport items other than ballots, the chain of custody concerns via the United States Postal Service could have ended up in Honolulu, Hawaii, the lack of poll workers. If you were lucky enough to be selected, inadequate poll worker training, the abysmal chain of custody handling of unsolicited mail-in ballots, the anomalies of those who voted, but they were not reported as having voted, the fact that people are allowed to register without proper ID that they truly are Nevada residents, people were inadvertently either removed from the rolls or switched to nonpartisan, the cost of a six-week process that could be handled in less time and with less cost, why local resources are not used for hiring poll workers or printing of materials, the quality of printed ballots, and the need to place party affiliation on the ballot. This is just a list of things having to do with procedure audits and process audits. I'm not going to go through those right now. We have community advisory boards. Could the Commissioners explore creating an election advisory board to conduct these audits and help identify and remedy these process and procedure deficiencies? It's for the good of the community as a whole, not one party or the other. Quickly, I want to say, people have talked about, well, the primary workers were polite and courteous. Yes, they were. Nobody's talking about that. Hopefully, public can receive an explanation for purchasing... darn it.
Kirk Ariano, followed by Jim Anderson.
I'm a resident out in Shadow Ridge. Been here in Nevada for 30 years now. And I have concerns of our valley out there, how it's turning, so much traffic. Basically, our infrastructure should be thought of before all of our developments going on. So I travel that road every day. My wife travels it. My children travel it, and they are with my grandchildren and also with me and my wife. Our concern is, is when we go down Pyramid Highway, now we deal with a two-lane highway. And with all the growth, every day I go down that two-lane highway wondering, where am I going to dodge from the car heading straight at me head-on? Do I take the alternative off? Maybe roll my car? Probably better than a head-on collision. So the big concern is, is you, as our county commissioners, can speak up and say, we need infrastructure before we expand that valley to the point where there's accidents daily or maybe even weekly, and fatalities is coming our way. I bought my home out there six years ago. It's my retirement home. And I back up to, I call it the toll road, but the private road up to the Donovan Pit. And now I get to sit in my backyard every day, listen to semi-trucks coming down my backyard, running engine brakes, which is illegal and residential. It's posted... We have community advisory boards. Could the commissioners explore creating an election advisory board to conduct these audits and help identify and remedies remedy these process and procedure deficiencies? It's for the good of the community as a whole, not one party or the other. Quickly, I want to say, people have talked about, well, the primary workers were polite and courteous. Yes, they were. Nobody's talking about that. Hopefully, public can receive an explanation for purchasing. Darn it.
Kirk Ariano, followed by Jim Anderson.
Morning. I'm resident out in Shadow Ridge, been here in Nevada for 30 years now. And I have concerns of our valley out there, how it's turning, so much traffic. Basically, our infrastructure should be thought of before all of our developments going on. So I travel that road every day. My wife travels it. My children travel it, and they are with my grandchildren and also with me and my wife. Our concern is, is when we go down Pyramid Highway, now we deal with a two-lane highway. And with all the growth, every day I go down that two-lane highway wondering, where am I going to dodge from the car heading straight at me head-on? Do I take the alternative off, maybe roll my car? Probably better than a head-on collision. So the big concern is, is you, as our county commissioners, can speak up and say, we need infrastructure before we expand that valley to the point where there's accidents daily, or maybe even weekly, and fatalities is coming our way. I bought my home out there six years ago. It's my retirement home, and I back up to, I call it the toll road, but the private road up to the Donovan pit. And now I get to sit in my backyard every day, listen to semi trucks coming down my backyard, running engine brakes, which is illegal in residential. It's posted all over the highway. It should be posted through residential. So now, my freedom, my retirement, and sitting in my peaceful backyard, looking at the valley, I get to hear trucks running engine brakes, and then they're building 600 more homes to the north of that road. Also, they're going to be listening to these trucks. It's just not a win-win for anybody, because basically, nobody's thinking of what the future leads. I know the growth is there. It's going to happen. We can't stop it. Something does need to go in where Donovan pit is. I don't know what the answer is, but running a mine operation, running semi trucks down through neighborhoods is definitely not the answer. So whatever your consideration is for our future, I hope it counts. Thank you.
Jim Anderson.
Commissioners, I'm here to speak on behalf of the Donovan Project. I've known that Donovan's a great many years since 1966. And when I moved into Spanish Springs in 1977, we were the fifth house in Spanish Springs. Two years later, we got our first phone, and my number was Spanish Springs number five. It was, it was an operator that we ended up talking to when we picked up the phone. I urge you to pass this in total, the way it is. Those people have owned that property. They're probably one of the oldest land title owners in that whole valley. And we have watched each house come in there, one by one, on all the construction. It is what it is. But to take away their right to be able to sell their property and move on with their lives after they have been a great neighbor. For example, the great flood of 87 cut a swath across Cali de la Plata that was 12 feet deep and 50 to 80 feet across. The nearest material was the Donovan gravel pit. At that time, a very small operation. The Donovan family worked seven days a week to produce enough material to fix that road. Oh, yeah, they sold us the material, but that was the only place we could get the material. So if you want to talk about a civic-minded group of people, it's the Donavons. Anyway, I won't take any more of your time. Please pass this.
That's everybody in chambers who has signed in. I do have an email from Donald Abbott that will be placed on the record.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Mr. Manager, will you lead us into the next item?
Item, item six is commissioners, county managers announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions' updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Do you have anything for us, Mr. Manager?
I do not.
Okay. Commissioners, I see Commissioner Lucy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to bring up a few things since our last meeting. We, I did get the opportunity to travel as our representative to NACO, Nevada Association of Counties, and the current president for Nevada NACO. We have shifted our meeting schedules where we usually meet with all of the commissioners across all 17 counties here in the state of Nevada to discuss local and state issues as it pertains to counties. We have shifted our schedules so that we can meet with our rural counties that make it very difficult sometimes to, to meet in Carson City always, every month. So we went to Ely and visited White Pine County. We had a wonderful meeting out there with some phenomenal discussions, a couple in regards to indigent services. And in that board, there will be a lot of discussions in this upcoming legislature in regards to indigent services and the representation in regards to how those services are paid for by the counties, and some of those costs are recovered through the counties from the state. And so, some interesting things to look forward to. Another thing that we, I'd like to do here at the county commission, and we had the brief discussion and participation in, was the new hiring of the new director, executive director for the UNR Nevada Cooperative Extension. As many of you know, each county pays a significant amount of dollars based upon population into the state of Nevada for Nevada Cooperative Extension, which is a direct benefit to the community from 4H to programming to child, child advancement. There's a number of different ways Cooperative Extension impacts each county. But Dr. Jacob Decker was hired to take over that position to fill Dr. Ivory Lyles, who moved on. I'd like for Dr. Decker, I know he was going to be relocating mid-part of this month, so should be getting situated here in northern Nevada soon, coming from Michigan. But like to have him come and present and discuss and meet with the commissioners and present his plans for the future of the Nevada Cooperative Extension and how that would be beneficial within Washoe County. So some wonderful things. You know, we feel, I feel that we, we're very fortunate in northern Nevada. Many of you expressed that this morning. You can hear that in the passion that people bring to the county commission meetings during public comment, whether that's issues of development and growth, whether that's issues in regards to anything that it pertains to. But we're very fortunate. We live in a state that is very diverse, with two very large urban counties, and then 15 very small rural counties. Driving along Highway 50, you see the benefits that these smaller counties are to maintain their heritage, to maintain what they do within, for example, White Pine, to add to their economic growth and try to bring business and their community together and ask for, for growth and development and mining and a number of agriculture and different things. But they do it on a shoestring budget and fight consistently to get that funding, to do that. One of the big challenges we hear from a lot of our rural counties, and one thing that we need to continue to consider from our commission to help our, our surrounding communities and the state as a whole, is infrastructure. Infrastructure needs from roads. We're very fortunate that we have a very quality road system here in northern Nevada, but needs to be improved constantly. But when you travel to the rural counties, they are responsible for their roads, along with the state, and it's very difficult to maintain those roads. Internet is a difficult thing that every county is experiencing. Housing, jobs are readily available within mines and agricultural and different, different nature throughout our state. But the housing, to house individuals, isn't always, is a constant challenge. So when you hear individuals express their concerns and challenges with growth within our community and businesses, it is a, it's a double-edged sword. Growth definitely has its challenges to traffic and impacts to the community, but it also brings the needed revenue and income that would force infrastructure, that would force the federal government to participate, the state to participate, in bringing those unnecessary revenue and funds to improve those communities. So this is not in just a Washoe County issue. This is a statewide issue that many counties across that have much less of the availability to do those types of improvements to address. So those are some of the things that we were talking about at NACO. One of the other things that we, I'd like to probably bring forward here prior to September is legislative issues that this county, going into the next legislative session, which will gavel down February 1st and continue next year to address many issues that were brought forward today, one of which, NRS 439, which is the governance and the state laws that oversee health districts across the state. That will be open this year to discuss the, the building of a health district for four counties, for other counties in the state. And I want to take a look at that, and if there are any changes that we need to post the pandemic and our incident command report, our final incident command report in regards to recovery of funding and how we go about that and what the health district looks like going forward. I think those are important that we need to discuss. And then changes to the regional plan, that is also governed by NRS. And we have, as our districts continue to, commission districts continue to change, there are some very limiting legislation, or there's very limiting detail within those laws for Washoe County specifically about how regional planning is addressed. And it can be changed, but that would be something we would have to talk about. NDOT. And then another big issue that I do want this commission to continue, and Mr. Manager, if we can, bring back, for those of you that have voiced concerns this morning in regards to the challenges on Pyramid Highway, I know a number of issues we, I continue to deal with on, in Commission District 2 is State Route 431 or Mount Rose Highway. As this growth continues to happen, and as businesses continue to move, and the economic development continues to flourish within our community, we need to address these roads. Many of these roads, though, are state-run roads. I've said it before on, from this dais, State Route 431, Mount Rose Highway, Virginia Foothills, those are state roads. Pyramid Highway is a state road. McCarran Loop is a state road. Kitsky Lane, believe it or not, is a state road. There are many state roads that are impacted within our region, yet are not maintained to county or city standards. And so I would like to continue to have those conversations. The, the light, the lights at, you know, on the signalization of intersections on Pyramid Highway, we did receive the final study from NDOT in regards to the Mount Rose improvements, but I'd like to see where we can move along in getting Mount Rose lights, some of the intersections on Mount Rose improved, as they've, you know, recently taken away the advanced warning systems for a number of those areas, and look at those, those road transfers as well, so that the maintenance of those roads or those arterials within our community are addressed. And then lastly, Madam Chair, if we can look at some future discussion about trash incineration policies within our county for commercial, for commercial waste, they are doing a number of these programs across the country to incinerate waste and utilize to, and it's incinerating commercial and green waste, but creating energy from that as a secondary source of production for power. I'd like to see what policies that we have in place for that in conjunction with the health district, and see if there are ways that we can impact some of those changes in our community to look for future growth of our energy network and do those improvements. And then lastly, the, the last thing I did want to bring up was the, I'm sorry, I wrote it, I did not write it down, and it just escaped me. I was thinking about it, and, but I will, I will, I'll think about it, and I'll bring it back. Please, thank you.
Commissioner Herman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I just wanted, just a short note here. I would like a progress report as soon as possible on, on how we're doing with solving the problem in Golden Valley regarding the overabundance of water, which is very rare in this state, but, and how we're going to solve the problem of people paying for something that, that they're not supplying, and make those adjustments. So, thank you very much. Hope that can be very soon, maybe even possibly at the next meeting, just a progress report on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. And I haven't heard from Commissioner Jung, unless you'd like to say anything.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. I just have two items. Our West Truckee Meadows Verde Township cab is meeting July 18th at the Northwest Reno Library, also on Zoom at 5:30 PM. So if folks want to come and join us at that meeting, we'd love to have you. And then I'm really excited to present on behalf of the Tahoe Transportation District Board at the Legislative Committee for Review and Oversight of the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency and Marlet Lake Water System. That will be on Friday, and I'll be advocating for the state to help us with a more functional public transportation up in Tahoe, which this board has been very supportive of. So I wanted to give you an update on that. Commissioner Lucy, do you have your item?
I do. Thank you. It came right back to me.
Great.
I did have, after we've had multiple discussions about, and we've heard through public comment, a multitude of challenges with poll workers and poll worker challenges, and being able to staff poll workers through the early vote and during election day, one of the things that I did find in the state of Nebraska, through NACO, I spent some time with the chairwoman out there, over on the phone, and one of the things that they do, and maybe we can look at here in the county, and I don't know if that's outside of our purview or inside of our purview, was that they do, they use a process very similar to jury duty for their poll workers. They have two different processes that are available. You can do one of two different ways. You can sign up for poll worker duty, as we do here, and volunteer for that work. But if there is a shortage or an inability to fulfill poll workers, they send selection letters for those individuals that have been registered to vote within the county to utilize people that have been voted, and, and it's a jury selection, very, very similar to a jury selection. They send out selection letters, and there's pay, there's, there's rules that guide that. But it's a potential solution that is working in Douglas County, Nebraska, to address. They have nearly 2,000 poll workers to run their elections through their early voting primaries and generals. There are possible solutions to that, so something that they can do to make sure that it is mandatory for staff to, or for residents to participate. And one thing that they have seen with, through that process of the selection letter of, for poll duty, would be actual more education of the election process, more participation within their elections from all of their residents who are registered to vote, and educate them on timelines, what the challenges are. And it does provide for some interesting outcomes. So something that maybe this commission can look into, and if it's in our purview, or if not, maybe potentially, if the appetite of the commission take that to the legislature for some changes with the voting requirements at the state level to help address some of those. And then one last thing, Madam Chair, that I did want to bring up, fire was brought up to, today about fire concerns. We did receive a update today from our Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District Fire Chief, Chief Moore. We have been notified today, for all of you out there in the general public and listening, there is a 20% chance of dry lightning today, so fire danger is high today. So we will be looking at updating our staffing, our, our stations a little bit more, making sure that we have ample and more reserve staff available if an event happens. But they are anticipating the dry lightning this evening and through the week due to the high temperatures and whatnot coming in. Please be, please be reminded that if you see a fire, please call, you know, please call directly to 911 and to our dispatch. But be aware that sometimes when there, a fire does occur, and if you do see dry lightning sparks, that very easily our 911 can be overwhelmed. So if they, if you get 911, it's, and the dispatch is not able to take your call, they're probably working on it. And what we will be trying to do through Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District and through the county is putting out on social media any events that are happening in the area, and that our staff is already responding if those events have been identified and are being worked upon. So with that, that's all I have for you today, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Great. I've got a long list of things to come back to the board from the commissioners. Thank you both. And Mr. Manager, will you please lead us into the next item?
Next item is 7A.
Next item is 7A through 7F1, which would be our consent calendar or agenda, and I have no changes.
Okay. Great. Do any commissioners want to offer a motion?
Madam Chair, before we move into this too, I would like to point out and bring everybody's attention to Item C4, 7C4. Commissioner, Vice Chair Hill, she is going to be donating out of her, or committing out of her district funds, $38,500. These are out of her Commissioned Special District Funds. She's going to be dispersing $30,000, the amount of $30,000, to the Incline Village Crystal Bay Visitors Bureau Board to support the Spring 2022 Todd Truckee Area Regional Transportation Connect Three Zone Project, which will help with transportation for many of the visitors and residents in the Tahoe Basin around for a safe transit. She will also be donating $5,000 in a grant to the Tahoe Fund to support ongoing sustainable tourism initiative. This will continue to make sure that there is a strategic plan going forward for many decades to make sure that tourism is non-impactful to our beautiful Tahoe Basin and allows for the continued support of our residents within the Tahoe Basin. She's also donating or committing $2,500 to take Incline Village Crystal Bay Community Bus Association to support an event, expenses around local hero, the Local Heroes Celebration and the Incline Village Crystal Bay Sky Show. And 1,000, and finally, she will be committing $1,000, $1,000 grant to the Reno Bike Project in support of the Fourth Annual Trilab. So I wanted to make sure that we put that on the record and pointed that out today within the consent agenda. And if there are no further comments, Madam Vice Chair, I would like to make motion to accept the consent agenda as posted this morning.
Great. Thank you very much for the second. Commissioner Herman, all those in favor?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Aye.
There is public comment.
Oh, there is public comment. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
So on 7C1, we have Elise Weatherly.
Hi, Elise Weatherly. What I wanted to say is, I liked what Janet Butcher had to say about implementing an internal audit for things like polling and voting. I guess I've lost your interest. Anyway, what I will say is, internal audit, I used to work for a place that I, they liked seeing me coming, I liked seeing them coming. Do you know why? I had nothing to hide. When they do these three-year plans, I would say, what you want more than anything is to document what you're looking for and then hire a person of integrity to actually look at these items. How are you going to know if, you know, you've got internal auditors, right? What if they're in collusion, you know, like they talked about here for a few places? What if, you give me a little bit of money and I'll make sure that you pass, right? Does that happen? Oh, gosh, no. That was sarcasm, by the way. Yes, it does happen. So all I will say is that take a close look at what's going on in these divisions and departments. Take a look at the people that are running these divisions and departments. Make sure we don't have a Paul Orphan in there, right? An embezzler from, from the Water Department. Make sure that you've got internal auditors that actually care about what's done, what's being done. That's right. Is that fair? I think that's fair. Thank you.
On 7C2, we have Tom Daley.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the record. Thomas Daley from the Estates of Mount Rose, and I would ask my, that my comments be entered into the record for today. As you consider approving the internal audit schedule for the next several years, consider that we are in an election year. Despite that biannual event, there is no recommendation from your Chief Financial Officer nor your Audit Committee to audit the recorders, excuse me, the Registrar of Voters Office nor the County Voter Rolls. Strange as the Registrar's office has already reported on failures in the recent election, including improperly printed ballots and their instructions, voters being erroneously reclassified as nonpartisan from Democratic or Republican by the DMV, and the wrong ballots being sent to voters in election districts which had been changed since the last census. Anecdotal evidence has documented cases of voters who had opted out of getting mail-in ballots, nonetheless receiving them, including my wife and myself, and some voters each getting two mail-in ballots, including two members of my former campaign staff. We have no Registrar of Voters now and have not had one for four months. Before you approve a new Registrar and throw her into the deep end of the pool, perhaps an audit of that office and the voter rolls would be appropriate. I urge you to direct, to direct the county auditor to perform such an audit or to engage a third party to do so, and before the general election on November 8th. A similar audit in North Carolina in February resulted in 430,000 ineligible voters being removed from the state's voter rolls. 12% of all voters in that state were ineligible to vote. A similar audit in Maricopa County, which is Phoenix, resulted in more than 37,000 ineligible voters being identified. Our voters need to be assured that our voter rolls are accurate, and you have a federal mandate in the National Voter Registration Act of 1993 to purge the voter rolls of ineligible voters. I urge you to do your job. Thank you.
I have nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So I have a motion by Commissioner Lucy, a second by Herman, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I think that is unanimous. All right. Thank you very much. We are now moving out of our consent items to the regular agenda. Commissioner Lucy, do you have a block vote for us?
I do, Madam Chair. Thank you very much. This morning, I'd like to offer, in a form of a motion, a block of Items 8, 9, and 12 on our agenda today for a block.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second for the block? Second from Herman. And then, Madam Clerk, before we make the vote, do you have any public comment?
I do. On Item 12, I have Dayla Gibson.
I'm Dayla Gibson, lifelong resident of Washoe County, and I'm the Director of Public Affairs for Planned Parenthood Marmontay. Last week, I was in this chamber to praise the work I had observed of the 2022 primary election workers and volunteers. Today, I'm here to speak in support of the appointment of Jamie Rodriguez to the position of interim registrar. Ms. Rodriguez's experience speaks for itself, and she clearly has an impressive history as a public service to Washoe County. She also seems to know what she's getting into, and contact with that office has always been professional. Thank you.
Great.
I also received 26 emails that will be placed on the record in support of Ms. Rodriguez's appointment for Item 12.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And with a motion by Commissioner Lucy and a second by Herman, all those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Oh, and then we'll, we'll let the manager read it into the record. Thank you very much.
Okay. Item 8 is a recommendation to approve a golf course development agreement between Washoe County and the Northern Nevada Youth Golf Foundation. First T Northern Nevada developing Wild Creek Golf Course. Assessor's parcel number 027-011-12 in Sparks, Nevada for affordable and charitable golf recreation. The Washoe County purchases approximately 40 acres of APN 035-080-04 from the Bureau of Land Management to be added to APN 027-011-12. Of monies committed to the improvement of Wild Creek Golf Course, $900,000 will be held by Washoe County to purchase the approximately 40 acres, allowing a remaining $2.2 million to be used for a one-to-one match for Northern Nevada Youth Golf Foundation's fundraising. Item 9 is a recommendation to approve an interlocal agreement pursuant to NRS 227-180 between Washoe County, a political subdivision of the state of Nevada, and the Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe of Nevada, a sovereign federally recognized Indian tribe, for emergency response services, including but not limited to appropriate fire, paramedic, and paramedics' transport services to the Gerlach area of Washoe County for an initial term of five years with possible two-year extensions. Item number 12 is a recommendation to accept the resignation of Deanna Spicula, Registrar of Voters effective July 31st, 2022, to accept the county manager's recommendation to appoint the Government Affairs Liaison, Jamie Rodriguez, to the position of interim Registrar of Voters effective August 1st, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. With those items read into the record, and we have a motion by Commissioner Lucy and a second by Commissioner Herman, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Great. Thank you very much. And do you have a, a comment? Commissioner Herman, yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to make a special thank you on Item 9, Fire Service for Gerlach. And I wanted to thank all the people that were involved with that, including our county manager and Chief Moore and, and the fire chief from the tribe. They all worked very hard to get this done. It was very difficult, and it was an amazing job they did, and I am so relieved that now we have a fire situation coming up and fire year this time of year, and we finally are going to have that service for the people of Gerlach. They are very grateful, and I, as a representative, am also. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Yes, I think that that's going to be a game changer for our community. So thank you for pointing that out. We now will go on to Items 10.
Item 10 is a recommendation to appoint, reappoint individuals to fill two positions as hunters, trappers, and anglers, or, or engaged in ranching or farming in the county, and an individual to fill one position to the public seat on the Washoe County Advisory Board to manage wildlife with all terms beginning June 30th, 2022, and ending on June 30th, 2025, as per NRS 501.260.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I see that Commissioner Lucy is signed in for this item.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I do appreciate the opportunity. This item was postponed from our last regular business meeting to allow for the ability for the general public to review all of the applications, because at the time of the meeting, those, those applications and profiles were not readily available for the general public, and since that time, we wanted to give the, the opportunity for these individuals and the public to have the opportunity to look at those, those applications. With that discussion, I want to, I want to, once again, I want to bring a little bit of historical knowledge to this board. This board is very much as it is a, an advisory board to Nevada Department of Wildlife in regards to wildlife management. The board in its, in its entirety does focus on many issues, and each county will have a, an advisory board that opportunity, that works with the Department of Wildlife to provide information as it pertains to their specific county, as it pertains to hunting, trapping, and fishing guidelines within those counties, and how that they can work cohesively with the ranching and farming individuals within those communities. And when we, when we appoint individuals to these boards, it's very important that the members of this board, when they participate in these discussions, and they are very important discussions, as every advisory board is, to bring local perspective, that these individuals have a background in this specific type of, of topic. So for example, with this board, hunters and trappers, fishers and anglers, ranching community, and, you know, as it pertains to conservation, wildlife management, and predator management, it's important to understand those topics. And to the applicants, hopefully, I have had a, I've had a chance, well, I have had a chance, and hopefully the general public has, to review these, these individuals. I feel it's very important to continue to make sure that we do have a responsibility to place smart, intelligent, active sportsmen and women to these boards for their continued leadership and continued advisement for that. And so after the, the close review, we do have three seats open. Two of those seats are being reapplied for by incumbent individuals, and then the, there is one open seat for an individual, one of the board members that has resigned and no longer wishes to participate. So I, today, will like to continue to support the two incumbent individuals, Jim Ray, who is going to be applying for the public seat, and then Steve Robinson for the open hunter and trapper seat, or the sportsman seat, which, which it should be. And, but those are my comments going into this. I wanted to make sure that that's, this is very different than animal services and managing policy within the community about animals within Reno Sparks and the Washoe County Unincorporated area. This is more about hunting and livestock and how we maintain those lands and the participation of conservation. So with that, Madam Chair, I'll turn it back over to you, and hopefully we have some public comment from individuals to discuss their, their willingness to apply for this board.
Great. And it looks like we do, Madam Clerk?
We do. First up, we have Matt Malarki.
My name is Matt Malarki. I'm the current chairman for the Washoe County Advisory Board to Manage Wildlife, but I'm submitting comment today for myself. I really appreciate the commission going back and putting those resumes and the letters of recommendation up on the website so that we did have a chance to see those. I would like to echo Commissioner Lucy's sentiments. You know, I think that this position really requires somebody who is actively involved in the management of not only wildlife, but the conservation of habitat for that wildlife as well. And when I look through that list, I, I too would like to see Jim Ray continue his duties and be reappointed for the public seat, as well as Steve Robinson be reappointed for the sportsman's seat. For the final sportsman's seat, based on the resumes and the information that's available, I would, I would ask this commission to support Ryan Brown. He's got the most extensive resume with regards to wildlife and habitat management and understanding the needs of Washoe County in that area. Once again, I appreciate your support and thank you.
Next up, we have Rex Flowers.
I'm a past member of the CAB here in Washoe County, serving from 2008 through 2014. I've been involved with the CAB and the Commission on Wildlife Issues for over 30 years. I currently am a board director for the Coalition for Nevada's Wildlife. I, I can echo Matt's sentiments on the three individuals that have been named. There is a fourth individual, Brad Pillsbury, that I would hope he would give some consideration to. He too is a conservationist and has been working hard in that, on that end, and, but both Ryan and Brad are pretty, pretty well entrenched. They work, they've both been involved with Northern Nevada Safari Club International, who does a lot of outreach stuff with Free Fishing Days and Mason T Ortiz Organization. They both work with MBU on, on projects there, installing guzzlers, reseeding projects and such. But those are the four individuals that are most qualified for this. This is, this position requires a lot of time and effort because you're not only discussing the resource, the wildlife of the resource, the wildlife itself, and the habitat. You're also managing people on the land. We have to recognize multiple use, whether they're bird watchers, hikers, OHV people. We can't infringe on their rights, yet we have to make sure we protect the resource. So, it's a very in-depth situation. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I also have an email submitted from Brad Pillsbury that will be placed on the record.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And now, I'll bring it back to Commissioner Lucy, who's signed in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I want to echo Mr. Flower's comments as well. When I first started on this board, eight years ago, and this was a board that was kind of lost in the wind in regards to our connection from the county standpoint to the Wildlife Commission and to the Wildlife Commission at the state, but our advisory commission, and we had a very difficult time filling these seats. And I want to thank, first of all, all of the applicants that included their names to move forward with this. This is a very important issue, and to Mr. Flowers's point, it's more than just hunting and fishing. This is about, there's so many benefits that come from the conservation. Fuel's management is a major issue in northern Washoe County, and wildlife in our community is beautiful. It's an opportunity for individuals to participate, but they maintain a lot of the invasive, they maintain a lot of the invasive species. They eat through a lot of the cheat grass, which helps with fuels management in wildfire areas. So, to maintain this continued wildlife and their habitat, it's not just for the beauty of that, but they are very much a tool and part of our state, and so I want to continue to see that flourish in our area for many generations, for young kids to continue to grow in the sport, for individuals who visit our community to continue to see the beautiful outlying areas that are more than just our urban core. So, I would support the appointments. If there's no further comments, Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion at this time to appoint Ryan Brown and Steve Robinson to the two open sportsman seats, and Jim Ray to the public seat for the Washoe County Advisory Board to Manage Wildlife.
Great, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Herman, okay. And no further public comments, so all those in favor, aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, and that carries unanimous. Thank you so much, and again, to reiterate, Commissioner Lucy, thank you to all the applicants, and we really appreciate you wanting to get involved in the state and also Washoe County. We'll go to our next item, item 12, Mr. Manager.
Eleven.
Eleven, excuse me.
Item 11 is a recommendation to approve purchase of property located at 1775 East Fourth Street, Reno, Nevada, from Reno Housing Authority in an amount not to exceed the appraised value of $5.5 million to be used to provide shelter and related services for people experiencing homelessness. And this morning, I think in chambers, we have Mary Kanderas, who's got an update on the agreement.
Good afternoon, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, Manager Brown. I'm Mary Kanderas, Chief Deputy District Attorney, and it is actually unusual for me to be in this position. I'm usually in the chair that Mr. Edwards is sitting in when I'm before this body, but I'm just here today to provide you some information on item 11. It is my understanding that this item is part of a long-term plan for the homeless services in this region. As you may recall, we were here on June 28, and this item was, again, before you. Unfortunately, legal had not received the documentation from the Reno Housing Authority, so I was unable to provide really insight into the agreement. Since then, we've continued working with Reno Housing Authority and their attorney to come up with the terms of the agreement. What I'm going to do today is I'm here to answer any questions with respect to that, and then Assistant County Manager Kate Thomas can also talk about any questions, but specifically, when you look at the staff report that we brought before you, the terms were that we were going to purchase the property in an amount not to exceed $5.5 million, which is the appraised value. The terms, as you see, they may include, there were four terms, the first being approval of the purchase and sale agreement in the amount of $5.15 million. I believe the second term is a $350,000 subgrant to the Reno Housing Authority to be used for affordable housing. The third point, or the third term, was to enter into a lease. Currently, Washoe County is leasing the property, but we would extend the lease agreement for a period to coincide with the closing of the purchase. The lease term would be $40,000, and those payments would be credited to the purchase price. Now, the fourth subpart is, at one point, there was talk about Reno Housing Authority assisting with the cleanup of six 250-gallon underground storage tanks, which we believe contained gasoline fuel. It has been determined that the Reno Housing Authority determined that that money would be better spent to pursue their affordable housing, which, again, is part of the long-term plan for homelessness services in the area. So today, that fourth term is now, has been, like I said, the Reno Housing Authority determined they were not going to provide that. It is my understanding there is some commitment for cleanup costs from the city of Reno, and that will be in a separate agreement at a later time. So today, what staff is recommending is that you approve the purchase and items one, two, and three. And if you have any other questions, I'm happy to try and answer them, or Assistant County Manager would. Thanks.
Okay, thank you for that information. I see that Commissioner Herman has signed in.
Would it be possible to find out who did the appraisal and how it came out in the appraisal?
I don't have the appraisal documents with me, but we received the appraisal on June 22, and the appraised amount was $5.5 million. We can provide copies of that, and perhaps the Assistant County Manager knows more if you have other specific requests for information.
Thank you, Kate Thomas, Assistant County Manager, for the record. Yes, we can provide that appraisal document to you, and it's full. We'll send that to the commissioners, which shows who did the appraisal, when that was conducted, through the Community Services Department, as they are the landholder and leasing overseer of these types of things. So we went through CSE to do the appraisal, which is common practice for the county, so we'll get that sent to you.
So, actually, it was done in-house here?
No, they oversee the process. They go with a certified, licensed appraisal firm.
Do you have the name of that company?
I will get that for you here in just a second. I'll pull it up.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, in the meantime, while you're getting that information, I think we do have a public commenter, Madam Clerk.
Renee Rosentus.
Please put my comments into the record, Renee Rosentus. I've been trying to understand what's going on with the housing projects. Didn't we just pass, didn't you just pass approval for a housing project in Reno and to the amount of millions of dollars? And is this an extension, or is this another project? It just seems like the people here are just going to be taxed to death for these projects. I just think that it's an overreach to spend this kind of money, and I understand that you're paying, that we're paying a lot of money monthly for the lease, and I can see wanting to purchase or build the project because of that. But what's going to happen when we have to maintain that huge project and the other one, as far as the cost to the taxpayers? What is this building going to look like in 10 years? And are we going to be able to sustain it? I think it would be really reasonable to have a town hall, so that we can understand this and understand about the monies and what is happening for the future of these homeless projects. I was here, well, I think I watched you online when you voted on the last one, and I remember a question, and the answer was that law enforcement won't even be allowed in there. I mean, to me, it sounds like a glorified sanctuary city, the first one. So, I'd like to have a town hall, so we can have some understanding about what's going on in our community. Thank you.
Catherine Snedeker.
For the record, Catherine Snedeker, a non-person, non-resident, unenfranchised natural woman. You know, down at the courthouse on Sierra Street, there was a clerk that came here in a wheelchair, and he was complaining that the ramp to get into the building was full of feces and urine from the homeless, and he wanted it cleaned up, because it's the only way into that facility is using that ramp, and there's feces all over the place. He asked City of Reno to clean it up. He asked the judge what he should do. He came here, and when he came here, I think it was Kitty Jung who said, "We need to get that on the agenda." It never came on the agenda, never. But you're going to spend $5.5 million on a building for the homeless, and you won't spend $100 to hose off a contaminated health risk? What the hell is wrong with you people? You're taxing us so much because you illegally and unlawfully closed down Washoe County for more than 30 days, which is illegal and unlawful, which means you acted outside your authority, which means we can sue you personally, just like the guy in the bar. Not as a county commissioner, you've abandoned your job as our representatives. You're here strictly for the business end. How much am I getting? And we'll give you the deal you want. You're going to put 6,000 more homes in Spanish Springs, and no highway improvements to accommodate the traffic, but you're going to spend $5.5 million for homeless people. There's no tax money rolling in from all those businesses you shut down, all the families you devastated, but you're going to do $5.5 million for the homeless people. How much taxes does the homeless people pay? I'm sick of the way you are abusing and misusing our funds, and that little slush fund you did, that's not going to fly. When somebody thinks they're smarter than the judge and does something like that, the judge isn't going to like it when they hear about it, and the judge is going to hear about it. Okay, bye.
There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any other Commissioner comments?
I'm sending it to you now.
Oh, do we have the appraiser company?
Yes, I'm sending it to the commissioners now.
Yes.
So, the appraiser was Anthony J. Wren. He's an MAI SRA Certified General Appraiser, and that document has his information as well, has his license number on it, so when that's sent to the commissioners, and we'll put that on the portal as well.
Okay, any other Commissioner comments, or are folks ready to make a motion? Yes, Commissioner Lucy.
Madam Chair, Vice Chairwoman.
Oh, Commissioner Jung, yes.
I move to approve this item, please.
Okay.
I have a second.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucy. And we've done public comments. Any other comments, Commissioner Herman? No, okay. All those in favor, aye.
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 And it looks like... Okay, motion passive, thank you very much. So, at this point in the agenda, we're going to take a break until 1:00, and then we will commence the public hearings. Thank you, everyone. Okay, it is 1:00, and I am bringing the Board of County Commissioners back to order, and we are going to be going into our public hearings. We're going to be starting with item number 13. I will be opening up the public hearing. Mr. Manager, will you please read item 13 for us?
Yes, item 13 is a public hearing, master plan amendment case number WMPA 22-0005. Yes, item 13 is a public hearing, master plan amendment case number WMPA 22-0005 for the Verdi SOI rollback. Recommendation to amend the Washoe County Master Plan, Verdi Area Plan Appendix B, maps to assign the master plan designation of industrial on two parcels, APNs 038181-01 and 038172-14, that have been removed from the City of Reno's sphere of influence and returned to the Washoe County's jurisdiction. If adopted, the master plan amendment will take effect after a determination of conformance with the Trucking Meadows Regional Plan by the Trucking Meadows Regional Planning Commission. The Board of County Commissioners may adopt, the proposed master plan amendment may further modify the proposed master plan amendment and refer the matter back to the Planning Commission for its report in accordance with NRS Statute 278-220 subpart 4, or may deny the proposed amendment after the public hearing. If approved, the Board must authorize the Chair to sign the resolution to this effect.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And I would like to make sure that the record reflects that Chairman Hartung has joined us via Zoom. So we have all five Commissioners. I'd love to hear a staff presentation on this item. Thank you.
Great. Is this working today? Yes? Okay. I know in the past it wasn't. Okay, good afternoon. Courtney Waikie, Senior Planner, here to present to you for your consideration is case number WMPA 22-005 for a Reno SOI rollback. Okay, a little bit of background on the project. The master plan amendment being proposed is in response to recent actions by the City of Reno and the Trucking Meadows Regional Planning Agency that rolled back two parcels that were previously within the City of Reno's sphere of influence back into Washoe County's planning jurisdiction. The areas involved in the rollback include the two highlighted parcels in red totaling 27.98 acres. The parcels are located on the south side of Interstate 80 off Exit 7 and north of Mogul Road. While the parcels are vacant, disturbance to the site has occurred as a result of the railroad, I-80 corridor, and various utility projects in the immediate vicinity. To the immediate north of the project site is Interstate 80. To the southeast is an existing self-storage facility. To the immediate south is undeveloped land in the Union Pacific Railroad with large residential parcels south of the train tracks adjacent to the Truckee River. So in 2020, the Reno City Council voted in favor to remove the two subject parcels from the City of Reno's sphere of influence. When parcels are returned to Washoe County's jurisdiction, Washoe County Development Code, Article 110.106.30, states the regulatory zone of such parcels revert to their previous Washoe County regulatory zone, in this case, industrial. A master plan category must be assigned which is compatible with the existing zoning, industrial. Therefore, a master plan category of industrial is being proposed consistent with the existing zoning. Sorry. Here is a side-by-side of the previous and proposed master plan land use categories. Nearly the entire site is surrounded by public, semi-public facilities, which has a high compatibility rating with industrial. A small portion on the southwestern corner is adjacent to suburban residential. A neighborhood meeting was held on April 19, 2022 via Zoom. The meeting lasted an hour and 15 minutes. Approximately 22 people were in attendance. Predominant concerns surrounded around traffic, safety-related impacts, recreational access to open space lands, and intensity of possible future uses. On May 3, 2022, the Washoe County Planning Commission held a public hearing, took public comment, deliberated, and unanimously adopted Resolution Number 22-08 recommending the Board of County Commissioners adopt a land use category of industrial for the subject parcels. I didn't realize. Apologize, I didn't realize I had the slides there. Staff believes all of the required findings can be made and has provided rationale for each of them in the staff report. Should the Board agree with staff's analysis and Planning Commission's recommendation, a possible motion is included on Page 5 of the staff report and summarized on the current slide. With that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions by the Board?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you. I want to thank you for, everyone, for covering for me this morning. I'll have more comments later with respect to that. But I do have a question. Courtney, is there anybody who can answer why the City of Reno? Because this project was introduced at the City of Reno originally and was denied, and then the applicant asked for an SOI rollback, which, by the way, Commissioners, has never been done with the City of Reno that I can remember easily. We still have parcels south and in other places. We want it out of a joint planning area in the north, but this is kind of an unprecedented move. So is there anyone who can answer those questions for me, Courtney?
I guess...
The project, there was a project originally at the City of Reno. It was denied.
Correct. And that was related to a specific project. And I am not intimate with the details on why that was denied, only that the applicant did request, or the owners did request, that the rollback occur, and that's what is before us today. I'm not able to answer the historical background on any previous projects that went before the City of Reno.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, absolutely. Any other Commissioner questions for staff before we go into public comment? Yes, Commissioner Lucy.
Thank you. Courtney, I have a quick question in regards to the Planning Commission. They did, they adopted this in a unanimous vote. Did any of the Planning Commissioners share any concerns during the Planning Commission meeting? I can't see any in the minutes from their meeting, but I didn't see any of those. Were there any challenges that any of the Planning Commissioners offered up?
I think it would, to my recollection, the Planning Commission were in a position of trying to find a consistent master plan land use category that would be consistent with the existing industrial zoning. And there is no other master plan land use category that would be consistent with that industrial zoning.
Okay. Perfect. And then through some public comment this morning, there were discussions of parks and planned parks. Are there any current planned parks or that are in the planning stages or build-out stages around these, this parcel?
I may have to differ to Mr. Lloyd if there is any. I'm still fairly new to Washoe County, and I am not aware of any comments that we received from the Parks Department that had any concerns related to any future projects.
And then, once again, how large is this parcel?
29.9 acres.
And it's bordered to the, from my understanding, it's bordered to the north by property owned by Union Pacific Railroad. Is that correct?
Correct. I believe it's actually to the south, though.
The south, I'm sorry.
To the north is Interstate 80.
Interstate 80, okay. All right, thank you. Those are all my questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucy. Hearing no other questions from the Board for staff, let's go into public comment. Madam Clerk.
First up, we have Barb Vinnie, followed by Lori Leonard. Overhead, please. Thank you.
Can you enlarge, can you enlarge that? That's good, thank you. My name's Barb Vinnie, and I live in Mogul. And I have been involved in this project since 2019. So if you have questions, I have answers. I take exception to finding two compatible land use and finding A in the Verdi Plan, sufficient infrastructure and resource capacity. Nowhere in Mogul are there mega buildings and massive truck presence. This is a huge discrepancy and a violation of the residents of the Verdi Area Plan wishes, their wishes to impact the safety of the Mogul community. Mogul has antiquated intersections, short I-80 ramps, two exits, and an extreme amount of safety issues that City Council took exception to. Additionally, there are approximately 20 parcel slots of open space in and around Mogul held by homeowner associations in Somerset, Mogul Highlands, and Washoe County that total in the major Bull Creep Canyon that remains a place for wildlife such as bear, deer, bobcat, coyotes, et cetera, to migrate that have been left untouched. Mogul is a tinderbox waiting to happen with two exits. Three communities use our area to drive through, as in Mogul, Upper Mogul, Sunset Bluffs, or in the case of Sierra Canyon, to turn around because they have no east I-80 entrance. We do not want to have a catastrophic event, the likes of the recent California fires, which I've been assured by some fire personnel is a good potential. We want informed people to make judgments and to save our communities and potentially our lives. Would that be you? Thank you.
Lori Leonard, followed by Pat O'Brien. Lori Leonard. Pat O'Brien. Emanuela Heller-McNeilich.
Is this visible to you? Sorry, can we maybe pause the time? It's not working.
No.
Can we please get the tech?
I think IT is working on it right now.
Oh, it was just, I think, there we go. It's the cord.
Sorry about that. Dear Commissioners, my name is Emanuela Heller-McNeilich. I want to talk briefly today about liability. This is not working. Well, the city implemented a mixed employment land use over this with their reimagined master plan in 2017, and this paved the way for commercial land use. Did the owner sue the city then? No, he did not. In December, the Regional Planning Agency stated that mixed employment in the city translates to commercial in the county. So the commercial land use is the default land use here. Why do we, why are we here? So the buyer desires this to be zoned industrial. And can you be sued? So according to the Fifth Amendment of the Takings Clause, the government may not take private property without just compensation. So default land use is already commercial. Are you liable for land use decisions of the city? No, I don't think so. There is a Supreme Court case that is very related here from 1999 to Lucas versus South Carolina Coast, where South Carolina removed all rights of a landowner to build on an eroding barrier. And this was considered as a taking because the owner was stripped of all economic beneficial uses. However, you are not liable here under the Takings Clause because the River View Estates has plenty of economically beneficial other uses under the commercial instead of industrial zoning. And I have a nice table here, which also unfortunately doesn't show. It shows how the lots can still be very well economically used under commercial zoning. We have heard about the westbound on-ramp. It is absolutely not up to code even for normal traffic, and any additional industrial traffic would really be detrimental. This is already reflected in crash data, as I mentioned earlier, where we see already three times more crash data on the westbound on-ramp than on the eastbound. So do we want to add more industrial traffic there? So you can adopt this amendment, but you might be liable for any liabilities, fatalities, and crashes. And the neighborhood is now very alerted, and this is all in the minutes. This outdated infrastructure is incompatible with heavy use, and the city didn't want to be liable for this. Or you don't adopt this, and then you're not liable because according to the Takings Clause, you are not liable because you're not stripping the owner of all economic income. And the default land use is already commercial. You are not liable for the city's decisions. And usually, land use decides over zoning. Thank you.
Next up, we have Chris Engstrom.
Hello again. Good afternoon. I'm still Chris Engstrom, and I'm speaking in more detail on my opposition to the industrial zoning in this. But before I go to my written comments, this land is not already disturbed. And we kept hearing at the last meeting, and we heard it again today. I don't know what you guys are talking about as far as the land being disturbed. There is some storage there, but that's not the land in question, and it's a mini storage. And also, Mr. Lucy, your staff is unaware, but the parks is indeed, has a plan. We've seen it. We've met with Sophia Kershaman. There's going to be trails and bridges, and it is your county. So it's like two county departments should perhaps communicate to find out. So finding number two, these things are not compatible. Finding number two, industrial is not compatible with the residential area of Mogul. The two small existing businesses on Mogul Road generate very little traffic. Development in the proposed parcels, if it indeed exists, will significantly impact the residents, and the truck traffic is not compatible. Finding three, response to changing conditions. The argument that these parcels have always been industrial does not address the changes in the area over the past 40 years. The driving economic force in Mogul is residential, and the zoning should be altered to respond to the changing conditions. In addition, the county's own Parks Department, as I just said, is planning hiking and river access with that, and along with the Tahoe Pyramid Bike Trail in this exact area. Finding number four, available facilities. The available facilities are not sufficient for a large development. The underpass in Mogul is exit is narrow and frequently includes pedestrians and cyclists. We already talked about the I-ramp. Accidents with fatalities are a given if truck traffic increases. The five-way intersection under the underpass is dangerous today, and additional traffic would make it much worse. Finding number five, desired pattern of growth. The pattern of growth has been residential since 1907 with a burst in added residences in the 1980s and continues with new houses today. Industrial zoning is not incongruence and is not desired. In addition, the general Verdi Area Plan findings and the Verdi Community Plan maintenance findings cannot be met. Finding A, the amendment will further implement and preserve the vision and character of the statement, quote, "The Belleille Ranch and Mogul community are suburban developments but consider themselves rural due to lot size and non-commercial nature." The change to industrial zoning will not preserve that vision and character. Finding C, the amendment will not conflict with the public's health, safety, and welfare. As stated before, we know that it will. Again, the underpass and I-80 on-ramp, specifically I-80 West, and the five-way intersection south of the overpass are not sufficient. So the Verdi Community Plan maintenance findings can also be met, not be met. I'm running out of time. I can't read these, but you've got to look at the findings and really not listen to your staff, who are unprepared.
Next up, we have Paul McNeilich. Next up, we have Paul McNeilich.
Try this cord again, see if it works. Are we able to see the screen from the HDMI? Okay. Hello, Honorable Commissioners. My name is Paul McNeilich, resident of Mogul. We've heard from this and other local government bodies that you encourage and value engagement from the community. Here we are, we're engaged, and we've been engaged in this process for five years now, okay? Please hear our voices. Our interest is to ensure that development in our community happens responsibly and sustainably, and our contention is that industrial development is not suitable for these parcels. In 2018, City of Reno City Council agreed with the community, and a special use permit for industrial development was unanimously denied. The cited reason was incompatibility with surrounding uses and safety concerns related to industrial traffic. Nothing has changed. In 2021, the owner, River View Estates, and the new potential buyer, S3 Development, along with City of Reno, made a tactical move to remove these parcels out of the sphere of influence, thereby shifting burden of addressing these problems to the county along with the liability. The community was not informed about the SOI removal. We try to stay engaged, but we seem to be perpetually at a disadvantage in all of these processes. Before and since the SOI removal, this community has shown presence at every single meeting at the city, county, and regional level. We're engaged and we're committed, and our goal is, again, responsible development that does not harm the welfare of our community. In 2022, the Board of Adjustment heard our arguments and agreed, denying the special use permit. But very recently, the Commission granted the appeal, allowing a special use permit on the grounds that it was only for grading. But while this judgment may follow the letter of the law, the justification rings hollow for your constituents. Who's going to grade without putting a development on those parcels? This highlights another conspicuous hole in the system that really puts the community at a disadvantage. Jump ahead to the master plan amendment before you today. This amendment, this amendment has been initiated in the interest of the owner-buyer, as stated in the Regional Staff Report. However, Regional Staff also states there's a default land use of commercial. Nonconformance of commercial land use and industrial zoning can be addressed two ways. You can change the land use to industrial, which is what's before you today, or you could change the zoning to commercial to be in agreement with the default land use according to the previous master plan. Only option one has been considered, again, because this option is favored by the owner and buyer. The community is here to advocate looking at option two, a forward-looking and consistent with reimagined Reno. Please give full consideration to option two before making a hasty decision. Please show the community that you value our engagement and that you put community interests first. Please give the future of these important parcels deeper consideration. Ask yourself, what type of communities are we leaving for our children and for our grandchildren? Do not revert to outdated, backward-looking industrial land.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Catherine Snediger.
Catherine Snediger, a non-person, non-resident, unfranchised, natural woman. Have any of you gotten into a semi and driven under this overpass that the people from Mogul are telling you about? Has anybody? Have you just gotten in your own car and traveled around there? And what makes the preserve that we talked about earlier so important? And Mogul is not important. They have hiking trails. Like they said, the system there is antiquated. I want you guys to go out there and look at it and drive it and see what they're talking about. I want you to try to get on the highway at peak traffic, those little short entrances. I want you to try that. Because it's real easy to sit in an office and play with a computer and design something when you don't even know what it looks like in reality. Can somebody please actually do something that's beneficial for the people? How much was pay-to-play on this project? And what was the play that you got? This is not good. You're evil, mean people, completely disrespecting the public. They live it, you don't. And you all look down at your little computers. Are you playing solitaire? Somebody telling you what to say next, Bob? Very interested over there. You people never go, you know, don't tell me what to do, okay? I'm not a person up here. I'm a woman up here. There's a big difference. You can only regulate what you created, and you did not create me. You need to get off your asses and go out there and drive that thing and look at it. You need to see how many kids are out there, how many pedestrians are out there, especially this time of year. How many people are going to the Tahoe Trailhead? You need to look at those things. You need to experience it for yourself so you can see what they're talking about, not sit in your little stupid offices making drawings and say, this is how it's going to work? Because it isn't. It never does. Thank you.
Last up, we have Lori Leonard.
Ha, 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 ha. Others didn't seem to have much trouble getting it.
We've got a tech person coming down to help you.
Thanks. We'll try the other side. Oh, there we go. Good job. All right. Hi, thank you. Again, I'm Lori Leonard, and I have been a resident of Mogul for approximately 10 years. So again, as other people have restated, the request to have this zoned industrial is really incompatible with the current and future uses of this area, and really, the safety concern is, I think, number one. And actually, back again, these are signs right on the highway stating no services and residential area specific, trying to keep trucks and heavy semis and whatnot out of this area, probably because of issues in the past. So once again, this is really kind of the crux and the bottleneck of whatever is allowed to happen in this area. Again, as you can see, there's the blue where it's residential, and it's the green, which is public lands and open spaces. There's very few public access points to the river, and certainly on this red mark, this is where people are accessing the river and getting across the river on one bridge over into that public space. Once again, this is just very helpful for anyone who hasn't been out there in terms of why this section is really important. It's very, very dangerous as is. This is the five-way intersection. It is the one-way, one-way, one-way in and out. So this is where any type of traffic is going to be coming and going to get to those parcels. As I mentioned earlier, if there's a train coming through and two or three cars are backed up into the intersection, the entire area is blocked. And that could be for a mile length of a train. The train could be stopped. There's two railroad tracks there. So a train could be stopped on either of those tracks, impeding traffic in that area for who knows how long. So this is just a really critical location. This is from 2017, and there was a vehicle that was hit on this overpass. And this was a vehicle of someone who had traveled over there. He had a partner who lived across the railroad tracks, so he was even aware of how the trains work in this section. So once again, there's this where I am having to back up into that intersection. Across the railroad tracks is where the county is currently developing further plans for trails. So more and more people who are not familiar with safety of the train tracks there will be trying to access them. You can go up and over this first set of tracks, and there are not any gates there. One would think, if there aren't any gates, I should be safe. You know, they would let, the community and the public and the railroad would let us know if it wasn't safe, but it's all up to you. You have to hear the trains coming through. Thank you for your time. I have nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Back to the board. Are there any other board comments? Not hearing any. Any on the computer? Commissioner Hartung or Commissioner Jung?
I'm going to wait. I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I'm going to wait until a motion is made and then make some comments under discussion.
Okay. Well, I am happy to make some comments now. This has been a really difficult project, and I know that the community has gone through it with this project. And I wish that we had some better processes for you with this situation because essentially what happened is that the City of Reno was not going to approve a project on this site, and they had an option to kick it back to the county. And for that reason, they chose to not make the hard decision because they knew, I think, that there would be potential legal ramifications that they were going to deny any project that came before them. And when I'm looking, and I know that the community is asking for us to look at the findings, I can actually meet the findings. And I have to say that the owner has a vested right on this property. So if we were to change this master plan use to commercial, there would be an underlying zoning of industrial. And I know it has been brought up today that the owner or the county could go through and change that zoning. But that is a very difficult legal situation for the county to put ourselves in. We have discussed with the applicant whether there is an appetite to change the zoning to commercial, and there is not. This property has been zoned industrial for 30 years. The issue is, is that it could, depending on the judge, depending on the case and how long that we want to take this through the legal process, it could be perceived as a takings, both in Nevada state law and in the Constitution. I feel like the responsible thing to do is work with this developer after this master plan is approved to industrial and get the best project for the community. We had a community meeting. We got a lot of great input, and I look to staff to really do that work to ensure that this is a safe project moving forward. So I think one thing that I can promise the community is that there's many different things that we are doing to do better planning for you. We are working on the Regional Plan Board, Commissioner Hartung and I, on the SOI sphere of influence rollback. And there is actually an appetite by the City of Reno, I'm very loud right now, but there's an appetite by the City of Reno to rollback the sphere of influence, especially in the parts, this part of the city and the county. And if we do that, we want to look at changing our translation tables because I think that that needs to be more transparent for the community. Having a different land use than zoning on sphere of influence is very confusing. So essentially, when it went to regional, there was an option to look at perhaps making the change to industrial, but our staff wanted to bring it back to the county and make sure that the county commissioners could make that choice. And so that is why you see in the Regional Staff Reports that it has a different land use because that was what it was, and that is what the translation table, commercial, was in the City of Reno. So it's a confusing process. You deserve better as a community. I'm trying to see how we can make it better on the regional planning standpoint, and we also are going through a master plan process at the county, and I hope that people will get involved. We have a survey online that people can take on the master plan process, and we want to do better planning for you. So today, I'm going to move to approve this master plan use, and we will work with staff to make sure that we do the right planning for you and do the right project for you. Those are my comments. Any other commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Lucy?
Madam Chair, thank you very much, and I'm going to second your motion for, and with discussion, I want to make some, I want to make, address some comments. There's always been obviously some comments that there is pay-to-play from, in my position, there is no pay-to-play in my position. I'm not, I'm not sitting here playing solitaire. I'm looking at these parcels that abut the subject parcel to the south. The parcels that are in question are in control by the Union Pacific Railroad. And to the point that staff made, to the north, it is I-80. So you are sandwiched between a rail spur or a rail line and interstate that's controlled by the federal government. There is no, the parks that have been referenced, and I think that has been brought up a number of times, and I have utilized this, and I have been out there. I park across the trail tracks and utilize the Washoe County parcel that I believe was acquired through the WC1 Park Funds to maintain open space, to make it get access to the Canapa Ranch open space. I fish the river quite frequently right along this stretch. There is a dirt parking lot just past there. There is, right now, I mean, no dedicated park trails through there, and now there may be in the future. I do not know, and I'll have to go back to parks to identify that. But those, in my opinion, those will not be impacted by this development. And realistically, if you look at the contour of this development and this parcel, not the development, but the parcel in question, it sits at an elevation lower than the interstate highway, and so it would be blocked, any development would be blocked by the interstate towards and buffered into the residential area. Another issue, and I understand the challenges, and I hear the comments from the public in regards to traffic at that intersection for Mogul Road and the access to that area. We keep speaking of the industrial park and the challenges that would be had by placing an industrial versus a commercial. I don't see the detriment either way of either one of those types of development going into or that type of zoning for that parcel. Large trucks, when you look in an industrial park, even though the parcel in question is 27 acres or 26 acres and just under 20, just over 26 acres, the way it's configured, it would be very difficult for any developer or any land use developer to create an industrial park in this section because tractor-trailers need a certain turn radius to get back in, move trucks around, and provide that. So at most, in my opinion, and this is just my opinion, there would be delivery trucks maybe potentially out of there or something, but nothing of great size, no triple trailers, no double trailers. They just couldn't make it. You would want more of a convenient parcel that would be more square and have the better ability for access on and off the freeway. And so I don't see this, even though the industrial zoning will allow for it. I just can't, in my right mind, in my history, in my experience, in commercial real estate, that this would be ever facilitate, no matter who owns it, no matter what the property is, would facilitate a true industrial park. More than likely, this will maintain its character as a more of a commercial park, if any, in any future development. So I am absolutely in support of the motion today for those reasons, and understand that this is just the rezoning process, that any development would have to come back for a master, not the master plan, but a tentative map and future development process. And at that time, the Board of County Commissioners And at that time, the board of county commissioners could put constraints or changes onto that property, if need be, to address some of those concerns brought forth today by the public and the residents that live to the north, on the north side of I-80. So those are my comments. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Lucy. And I see Chair Hartung is signed in as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I won't be supporting this today. And the reasons I won't be supporting it are, I mean, I've had, we've had, all of us, trials with NDOT. Fourth Street, I believe, is an NDOT right of way. Those on-ramps and off-ramps are NDOT right of ways. Staff can correct me, but I think the Mogul Road piece belongs to Washoe County. So I don't know whether those underpasses would be NDOT's responsibility or our responsibility. But I'm concerned. I've seen these kinds of situations in Spanish Springs where you've got increased truck traffic. It's always a problem. It changes the nature of the whole thing. I am terribly concerned with the eastbound entrance seven. That, I mean, I have a fairly fast Jeep. You know, I've got a Hemi in my Jeep. And I've got to lean on that thing to get it up to speed to merge onto I-80. That on-ramp is woefully underdesigned. And so I just, I think that there's some real problems here. The developer has said that they want to build a commercial park, something that would be used by, you know, small contractors, plumbers, et cetera. So I don't understand why the angst on their part to not pull back the zoning and try to work with the community. So for those reasons, again, I won't be supporting today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Chair Hartung. And any other commissioner comments? Hearing none, I will make the motion. I move to adopt Master Plan Amendment Case Number WMPA 22-0005 to amend the Washoe County Master Plan Appendix B maps to assign the master plan designation of industrial to two parcels, APN 03818101 and 03817214, that have been removed from the city of Reno Sphere of Influence and returned to Washoe County's jurisdiction, and authorize the chair to sign the resolution to this effect. And in making this motion, I am able to make the findings, as well as make the following, or as well as making the Verdi Area Plan findings and Community Plan Maintenance Findings.
Second.
Okay, with a motion and a second, please, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposed?
Aye.
Two opposed? Okay, the motion carries three to two. Thank you very much. Please affirm your votes on the screen. Yes, motion carries three to two. And looking forward to working with the community on this project and on future projects to make the community safe. I really appreciate everyone coming out. Thank you. All right, we are going to item number 14. Mr. Manager?
Item 14 is Public Hearing Appeal of the Washoe County Planning Commission's Denial of Master Plan Amendment Case Number WMPA 22-0001 and Regulatory Zone Amendment Case Number WURZA 22-0001 Donovan, which sought to amend the Washoe County Master Plan Spanish Springs Area Plan Appendix E maps to redesignate the master plan designation from rural to suburban residential in four parcels totaling 144.83 acres, and which sought to amend the Spanish Springs Regulatory Zone map to change the regulatory zone from general rural to low-density suburban on the same four parcels. The appellant is Christie Corporation LTD, and the property owner is Donovan Land LLC. The project is located at 11600 Pyramid Way, Sparks, Nevada, 89441, and encompasses four parcels, APNs 534-591-01 for 49.49 acres, 534-591-02 for 45.34 acres, 534-591-03 for five acres, and 534-591-05 for 5 acres. The Board of County Commissioners shall consider the appeal based on the record and any testimony and materials submitted at the public hearing. The board may affirm or reverse the Planning Commission's decision. If the board reverses the Planning Commission's decision, the board may adopt the proposed amendments as presented to the Planning Commission. If adopted, the Master Plan Amendment will take effect with a determination of conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan by the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission. If approved, the board must authorize the chair to sign the resolutions to this effect.
Thank you. We'd love a brief staff presentation. Thank you.
Key again, Senior Planner, Washoe County. The case before you is Appeal of WMPA 22-001 and WURZA 22-001. On May 3, 2022, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on the proposed master plan and regulatory zone amendments and passed a motion to deny each. On May 10, 2022, the appellant, Christie Corporation, LTC, submitted an appeal application included as Attachment D seeking to overturn the Washoe County Planning Commission's denial of both the master plan and regulatory zone amendment. I'm going to go briefly over the project description and background for you now. The project site consists of four parcels totaling approximately 145 acres, located in northern Spanish Springs, east of Pyramid Highway. The subject project area is outlined in red. Currently, the project area includes a longstanding aggregate mining operation known as Donovan Pit, commercial landscape materials yard, and a composting operation. The five-acre parcel at the southeast corner of the project area is developed with a single-family dwelling. The Shadow Ridge subdivision is located immediately west of the subject property. Sugarloaf Peak and open space lands are to the east. The Donovan Pit has been owned and operated by the Donovan family for nearly 70 years, and they wish to discontinue the aggregate mining operation in the future. As a means of restoring the site, the applicants are asking to amend the master plan land use and regulatory zone in order for the potential to develop a future residential subdivision. The applicant is requesting to amend the Spanish Springs Area Plan to redesignate the existing rural master plan designation with suburban residential on four adjacent parcels of land. This would be consistent with all existing immediate adjacent land designations shown here in the light pink. The second part of the request is to change the regulatory zone on all four subject parcels from general rural to low-density suburban. Per the compatibility matrix found in the land use and transportation element of the Washoe County Master Plan, the compatibility between the proposed and existing adjacent regulatory zones would all have a high compatibility rating, with the exception of a medium rating adjacent to general rural shown in green to the south. The project site is located within the Spanish Springs Suburban Character Management Area of the Spanish Springs Area Plan. The SEMA is the designated growth area of the Spanish Springs Valley per the area plan. A neighborhood meeting was held virtually via Zoom on February 23, 2022. The applicant provided a thorough summary of the meeting and was included as Exhibit F to the Planning Commission's staff report. Predominant concerns surrounded around increased traffic, concerns with access through Horizon View, lack of disclosure by rider homes regarding possible future access through Horizon View, and questions about the general design of the future development. The Planning Commission's staff report provided a detailed discussion and analysis of all required master plan and regulatory findings. For the sake of time, I will not go through each finding and will rather respond to any questions on any findings as necessary. In addition to the broader master plan and regulatory zone amendment findings, Spanish Springs has a number of applicable findings required for this type of request. Again, I will not go through each of them. However, staff has provided a rationale for each of those in the staff report. Here is a summary of the Planning Commission's action taken. A motion to deny the master plan amendment passed with a vote of four in favor and one opposed. A motion to deny the regulatory zone amendment passed with a vote of three in favor and two opposed. One commissioner was absent, and one commissioner recused themselves due to a conflict of interest and did not participate in the hearing of this item. Each commissioner cited the findings they were unable to make, seen overhead, and included in the staff report. With that, the board may take one of the following actions: deny the appeal and affirm the Planning Commission's decision to deny master plan amendment, the master plan amendment and the regulatory zone amendment request; or two, grant the appeal and reverse the Planning Commission's decision and thereby approve the master plan amendment and regulatory zone amendment as presented to the Planning Commission. Two motions have been provided for your consideration, depending on the decision to affirm or reverse the Planning Commission action. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much. So we will now allow the appellants 10 minutes to give their presentation.
Good afternoon. For the record, Mike Raely with Christie Corporation. Also with me is Scott Christie with Christie Corporation, Tom Donovan, the property owner, and Lauren Chilson with Headway Transportation. Is that better?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't realize it turned off. I'll start over. Good afternoon. For the record, Mike Raely with Christie Corporation. Also with me is Scott Christie with Christie Corporation, Tom Donovan, the property owner, and Lauren Chilson with Headway Transportation. I did have a PowerPoint if I can get that pulled up.
Did you send it to the clerk?
Yes.
Okay. They're still working on it? We just need a few more minutes.
No problem. There you go. Great. Okay, I'll get going. These first couple slides are going to be fairly repetitive over what Courtney already presented, so I'll kind of skip through these. Let's see, the project area, 144.83 acres, located east of the Shadow Ridge subdivision. There's an overall map there. This aerial photo, the aerial mapping, hasn't necessarily caught up with construction. So the lots that you see that are vacant are now have homes on them within Shadow Ridge. And then the Harris Ranch subdivision is under construction to the north. Some photos looking from inside the pit itself, and then looking into the site from the current terminus of Horizon View. As Courtney mentioned, this property is within the suburban character management area. That is the identified growth area within the area plan. It's also consistent with the TMSA boundary. In fact, the TMSA boundary mimics the suburban character management area boundary for Spanish Springs. The existing master plan is on the left, proposed on the right. As you can see, the suburban master plan designation that's being proposed directly matches that that exists on all four sides of the parcels. Similarly, the low-density suburban zoning matches that of Shadow Ridge, of Harris Ranch to the north, and to what is now common area for Shadow Ridge to the east. The Donovans have owned and operated the pit for approximately 70 years. It's operated as an aggregate mine for that entire time. The Shadow Ridge subdivision was actually part of the overall Donovan Ranch that was in part of the Donovan family's ranch that was sold and developed as Shadow Ridge. Both Shadow Ridge and the pit properties were included in what was called the Spanish Springs Specific Plan back in the 1990s. And I like to joke with Mr. Lloyd, it was one of the first projects I worked on when I was out of college, and I think he is too. So the pit, the Spanish Springs Specific Plan allowed the pit to continue operating under a special use permit. So it is a conforming use. However, the long-term vision for the pit was to transition to a more compatible residential use in the future. So when the Spanish Springs Specific Plan was put into place, it was kind of out in the middle of nowhere. The pit wasn't interacting with the neighborhoods the way it is now. So it was well documented, and the Donovans were very transparent, that that would transition to a residential use in the future. Essentially, that's how the pit would be reclamation. It would transfer over to a more appropriate use. And now that the area is building out, the time has come to do so. So the density permitted under the requested LDS zoning was contemplated as far back as the 1990s in the specific plan. And if you go back and look at the Shadow Ridge staff report when that tenant map was approved, it's very clear that the density that was associated with the pit was not implemented within Shadow Ridge. It was reserved for future development of the pit site. So overall, if you look at what the specific plan called for, it called for 548 units. We're actually well below that with 144 units that this could allow for in the future. So I think that's an important consideration, that because that was planned when Shadow Ridge was constructed, infrastructure, extensions, provision for services was all provided with those plans and are essentially stubbed to the project boundary. The proposed land uses are identical to Shadow Ridge, and it's one dwelling unit per acre density. I know there is a petition that circulated around. I have family in the neighborhood. I've seen the petition. I've heard the concerns that there's going to be 400 units built. No, this will only, the zoning only allows for a maximum of 144 units. And I think the confusion there lies that Shadow Ridge has lots that are as small as 12,000 square feet because it was developed with common open space. So the overall density within Shadow Ridge- So the overall density within Shadow Ridge, even though the lots are smaller than one acre, is one unit per acre, and this will directly match that. So we envision that a future project would essentially be the final phase of Shadow Ridge. And then once again, that will all be brought forward with a tentative map that will go back through a public process which can be conditioned, including any applicable analysis that needs to be done in terms of the project impacts. As I mentioned, this is, future development repurposing of the pit has essentially been on the books for 25-plus years. By eliminating the mining operations, up to 750 daily truck trips will be reduced that come up and down the haul road. That's 325 trucks in, 325 trucks out, plus additional trucks in terms of the smaller dump trucks that you see going in and out. We feel that the residential use is much more compatible than the existing heavy industrial operations that are occurring now, and this is fully supported by the goals and action plans of the area plan. I'm just going to go real briefly through the findings. I think these are the key findings associated with the master plan amendment. First, consistency with the master plan. As submitted in our application and documented in the staff report, the project does conform with all policies and action plans contained in the area plan. Compatible land uses. I think that the proposed low-density suburban and future single-family use is much more compatible with the surrounding area than a heavy industrial use, the aggregate pit that exists today. Response to a change in conditions. As I mentioned earlier, the pit was allowed to continue in operation because it was essentially isolated when the plans were adopted. It was in the, it was out by itself. Now that the area has changed dramatically in terms of the development that has occurred, it's no longer necessarily a compatible use, so this is response to change in conditions. Availability of facilities. As I mentioned, when Ryder Homes and Sinclair Homes constructed Shadow Ridge, the utility, infrastructure, roadways, easements necessary to serve a future project were put into place. Desired pattern of growth. I think conversion of the pit to the residential use really provides a benefit. Number one, it provides for more compatibility in terms of the land use, and it provides for a highly effective way to, for the reclamation of the pit itself. And then obviously, no effect on the military installation. Before we turn it over, I know Tom Donovan would like to say a few words, but I would like to, as I mentioned, there's been some misinformation that was circulated within the neighborhood and on the Nextdoor app. It's been presented that 400-plus units could occur with this change. No, that is 144. The maximum density permitted under the requested LDS zoning is 144. So when you look at that, I think that the impacts that are being envisioned by some residents are greatly exaggerated based on that higher number of units that was discussed. Another kind of thing that was circulated through the neighborhood is that construction traffic and trucks would utilize Horizon View for future construction within the project. That would not be the case. The existing haul road that serves the Donovan Ranch pit could be used for construction traffic, and that's what envisioned what would occur, and that can be conditioned with a future tentative map. Once again, I can't stress enough that the Donovan's have been transparent for 30-plus years on the ultimate kind of end game for the pit and what was to occur there. It's documented on the public record. It's documented in county plans and staff reports. We feel that the Planning Commission based their decision on speculation of a future hypothetical project that was not relevant to the request before you today, and failed to address the area plan policies that would essentially encourage what is being requested before you today. So we ask for your consideration of the item, and I would like to have Tom Donovan come up and say a few words.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Tom Donovan, I am the owner out there. I'd like to take one moment to thank you all for your public service. You've put yourself out there to get in this position to represent the public, and as I'm sure you've discovered, it's pretty much a thankless job, and it's become much more thankless in this age of misinformation, misunderstanding, and some outright non-factual things. This is, as Mike has said, this is a continuation of what we envisioned, starting actually the first discussion is go back all the way back to the late 80s. And when this, the northeast section of Spanish Springs was thought to be how it was going to be developed and so forth. And decisions were made, and it was obvious that the growth was going to occur, how are we going to plan for this and manage this and so forth? And it has actually come to pretty much fruition. And way back when, when I was small, that was the middle of no place, and it was great. Great place to grow up. But the nature of the area has changed dramatically, particularly in the last few years, when the tentative map for Spanish, for Shadow Ridge was approved almost 20 years ago now. We envisioned that we'd be having this discussion 10 or 12 years ago, and then along came the Great Recession sort of thing, and everything came to a stop. And I think some of where, some of this misinformation and lack of understanding is coming because the process was drug out so long. The property, the original builder of Shadow Ridge, Sinclair Homes, built 11 houses and went broke. Their grand opening was in December of 2007, which is not really good timing. So all these things have been, as Mike said, clearly documented there, but it's been so long that it's kind of gotten lost in the backscatter unfortunately. We're trying to bring this thing to a conclusion that we're going to provide a finish for what we've been working on for since 1959, and also provide more residents, but also some more amenities for the area out there. And also, I think it's safe to say that when we conclude our pit operations and we do the suburban development, that it's probably going to raise everybody's home values out there because you're not listening to me operate six days a week.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Before we do public comments, do we have any commissioner questions or comments? Commissioner Lucy?
I do for staff. Mr. Lloyd, can you approach the dais for me or the podium, please? Mr. Lloyd, I have some questions in regards to, and I share some, share some of the concerns of the community out there in regards to the haul road. Now, I know the haul road itself is owned by Mr. Donovan and RT Donovan Company Incorporated. Why is there an ability to add a secondary access or primary access off of that haul road into a, into a potential development on this property?
Thank you, Commissioner Lucy, and through the vice chair. Trevor Lloyd, planning and building. My understanding in discussions with our traffic engineers is that that doesn't meet the minimum spacing requirement through NDOT. And so we can certainly work with NDOT and see if there are any options or any alternatives, but the original, their original response is that that cannot be used as a primary access, only a secondary emergency access.
Secondary emergency access. Now, to the south, to the south, there are available properties, parcels that would link into Calle de la Plata, but there is a parcel owned by Washoe County, which is 6.7 acres just directly to the south of the Donovan's. It's APN 534, 591-04. And that seems to be a drainage, or a drainage property, or is there potential to allow for, if acquisition of that southern property, for them to utilize access to Calle de la Plata if they were to acquire that property directly to the south?
I don't know at this point that I can commit one way or the other. I think that's something that we would certainly entertain as an option if it's viable. Again, what we have before you is an application.
For zoning, yes.
To change the color on a map.
I guess I'm looking for future discussions in regards to, because of the zoning and access and traffic seems to be my biggest issue with this. I'm trying to find alternative situations, and I have a tendency to agree in being that we've been so successful with working with NDOT over the last two decades, and they've heard our pleas on Pyramid and added all the, you know, needed improvements and signalization. I'm trying to figure out if there's a way to move traffic to the south to Calle de la Plata, and if so, I would like for staff to look into for future reference into that APN 534, 591-04 for potential of usage of an easement through for access if acquisition of that parcel to the south, which would be 534, 58209, which is a vacant parcel, if that was something that could be, could be done. So that is a question that I'm posing to staff for future, for future planning. But those are my only questions at this time. Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucy. Any other commissioners have staff questions before we do public comment? Two, sorry, Trevor, two Commissioner Lucy's questions. I, I think that we had some really great comments from public commenters about ways to ensure that the development is done with the community, and I know that there was a community meeting, and I don't know how we make sure that those comments aren't lost with if this moves forward and we're looking at an actual project, how we can ensure that those comments are also part of that record with the next step of whatever that project will look like.
Yeah, that is absolutely the intent. When a tentative map, let's say it does get approved tonight, if a tentative map comes forward, we will bring forward all of the comments that were, that we received throughout the public engagement process.
Thank you. Okay.
Madam Chair, before, before Mr. Lloyd goes away, may I ask him a question?
Yes, absolutely. Chair Hartung.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the floor. Mr. Lloyd, the applicant did a traffic study on Horizon View. What's the level of service currently on Horizon View?
It's a Level C.
Level C. What time period is that? Is that over a 24-hour time period, or can you define that, Courtney? Do you know?
Commissioner Hartung, the applicant's engineer, traffic engineer is available.
Perfect.
To answer that question.
Good afternoon. Lauren Chilson, traffic engineer with Headway Transportation. To answer Mr. Hartung's question, the intersection at Pyramid and Horizon View operates at level of service C, as staff noted, that's during the peak hours, both AM, AM operates a little bit better, but AM and PM peak hours. That's the timeframe.
Okay, so those are, those are peak hour flows, because I've, I've been through there when I would tell you in the morning and in the afternoon, I've come out of there. And with all due respect, I, I don't think it was a Level C. So I, it seemed like it was, it would break periodically to me, especially during peak flows.
Sure. We operate the traffic volumes that we observe and make the calculations by the standard formulas, so that's, that's what we understand it to be at this point in time. And again, you know, this is a rezone. At the point in time when we have a project, we'll study it absolutely in detail with the full traffic impact study and identify exactly, you know, what needs to happen to manage those traffic volumes, but we don't typically do that at a rezone level.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk?
Sorry. Before the, I'm sorry. Insert your name. I didn't catch your name.
Lauren Chilson.
Mr. Chilson, thank you. Mr. Chilson, now you did the traffic study on Horizon View. By chance, do you know what current, what the current traffic is in and out of the pit for haul trucks and the equipment utilizing the Donovan pit currently?
My understanding is, you know, on a kind of an average daily basis, approximately 750 trucks a day. I think it's interesting to note that at 144 residential units, that daily traffic would be something like 1,400-ish. So you reduce, you know, that by the truck traffic that exists today, and in fact takes up more capacity on roadways than cars do, and typically creates more awkward traffic conditions in some ways. This is probably a benefit to some degree to actually convert the pit to residential.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes. Any other commissioners? Okay. Madam Clerk, we're ready for public comment.
Okay. First up, we have Paul Rodriguez, followed by Norma Saracino. Paul Rodriguez.
My name is Paul Rodriguez, and I'm a resident at the Shadow Ridge Community. While growth is inevitable, I get it, I understand it, and I heard of the infrastructure versus growth talk this morning, and I understand that too, but I still need to ask the question, why do we need to stack more homes off of Pyramid Highway? There are 50,000 cars a day using Pyramid Highway, and it's one of the reasons why it's more challenging now just to get on the Pyramid Highway. The intersection is, has speeding cars going in both directions, semis from, trucks coming from Donovan Pit, semis going to the street across the intersection, so it's, it's making it very difficult to, to cross that street. And there are currently long skid marks approaching that from Pyramid, that's showing that there are problems in that area, that intersection, so we have a traffic problem there. So once I finally get onto Pyramid Highway, it's already starting to get congested with traffic, so. With the 3,000-plus new homes already approved and the additional homes from the Donovan Pit proposal, it will become more increasingly dangerous to drive safely on Pyramid Highway. Now, safety is our major concern, and we are now seeing an uptick on more traffic accidents on Pyramid Highway. There are more pedestrian accidents, more auto accidents, and including what's happened recently, I'm seeing a lot more cars being rear-ended at a stop for a traffic light. And of course, there's more fatalities. In the Planning Commission's own words, "They are painfully aware of the current traffic problems on Pyramid Highway, along with the additional impact of the already-approved new housing developments. Approving more homes now is just adding more fuel to the fire." In light of this, we need to pump the brakes for now by not adding more cars on Pyramid Highway at this time. NDOT also needs to do their part by improving the infrastructure. They need to widen Pyramid Highway, and they need to complete the proposed links from Pyramid Highway to Highway 395 and USA Parkway. These few steps and others could hopefully help us stay safer while driving on Pyramid Highway. I ask that you deny the appeal for rezoning from general rural to low-density suburban and deny the change to the master plan. I thank you for your time.
Norma Saracino, followed by Wayne Combs.
Hi. My name is Norma Saracino, and I live at Shadow Ridge. NDOT does not have any plans to widen Pyramid Highway, which is already overcrowded and dangerous. Pyramid Highway is a 55 mile an hour highway. However, people drive 70 to 90 miles an hour on Pyramid Highway and use emerged lanes as a traffic lane. Pyramid crashes. Year 2021, there were 214 crashes. Year '22, 93 crashes to July 5th of this year. Pyramid does not have enough lanes for the current development, let alone the new development in progress. Additional development will only, will only worsen the bad traffic and safety issues that now exist. Only one has to look at all the skid marks at existing traffic lights and other areas on Pyramid Highway to see what's already happening. Does someone at Shadow Ridge Community have to die before something is done? Adding more homes to the pit will only cause more danger. More lanes need to be added to Pyramid Highway before approving land sale for more housing, and infrastructure needs to be addressed as well. That was it. Thank you for listening to me and taking my considerations into account, and please do not allow further development of the Donovan Pit until our neighborhood issues are properly addressed and resolved. Thank you.
Wayne Combs, followed by Sam Vasino. Wayne Combs, followed by Sam Vasino.
My name is Wayne Combs. My wife and I bought our house at Shadow Ridge a little over two years ago. And during that timeframe of the two years, we've noticed the traffic on Pyramid Highway virtually double. And that's because of the thousands of homes that have been built and the thousands of homes that are being built on Pyramid Highway. At Horizon View in Pyramid Highway, Horizon View is the only entry and exit into Shadow Ridge. It is a two-lane highway on Pyramid at that point, and it has 65 miles an hour speed limit. Getting across from Horizon View to go south onto Pyramid is ridiculous at certain times of the day. And it is very dangerous. I have personally seen, while I've been waiting to be able to go across the lanes to get onto Pyramid Highway, accidents almost occur. And it's people beeping their horns, hitting their brakes because of trying to avoid accidents. Adding new homes to Horizon View's traffic pattern to exit onto Pyramid Highway seems ludicrous in my mind. I, I can't imagine, as time goes on, how many accidents there's going to be. NDOT has made statements that they have no plans to widen Pyramid Highway at the Horizon View area, nor do they have plans to install a stoplight. It's just ludicrous in my mind. I ask that the Commission to reject the plans until there are other viable alternatives to provide truck traffic into the Donovan pit area for home construction, which I don't have a problem with, as long as there are other entries and exits available for that area. And until that happens, I ask that the Commission deny. Thank you.
Sam Vasino, followed by Gordon Astrom.
My name is Sam Vasino. I live at Shadow Ridge. My, our main concern, and I speak for my wife Claudia, who was not able to be here today. I know that you have a petition that was delivered yesterday with upwards of 400 signatures on it. Mine is not included on that because we were not here. I came home early from vacation because I thought it was important to be here to speak. That's the reason we were not on, on the petition. There, there are so many homes being built right now and growth is inevitable, but with growth comes infrastructure. And right now, Spark Spanish Springs do not have the infrastructure to support all the homes that are on the books or that are currently built. I know that some of this is redundant, but traffic coming out of Horizon View onto Pyramid is dangerous. There's a right-hand turn that allows people to get into our development, and then there's traffic going to the left of that right-hand turn that sometimes you can't see those cars. It's just a matter of time before there's a tragedy there. And I know that the county has no control over the road, but you have control over growth. Planning Commission denied this. The Planning Commission is there for a reason. You need to listen to their judgment. I just think that that denial should be affirmed and something needs to be done to address the traffic issue on Pyramid because the three arteries that run north and south, you have Vista, you have Sparks Boulevard, Pyramid Highway, mornings, afternoons, gridlock. I avoid it at all costs because I don't want to be in that position. So I appreciate your time listening to us and I hope you do the right thing. Thank you.
Gordon Astrom, followed by Michael Craig.
Thank you very much. My name is Gordon Astrom. I live in Horizon View, just like everybody else that's here talking to you. I sort of agree with Mrs. Christensen. Those houses are going to be back there, whether you do it this year, next year, or 10 years from now, there's going to be houses on Donovan's pit. Question is, what can we do now to mitigate the infrastructure problems that we have? NDOT is slow to say the best. So Pyramid will someday be fixed, but until then, we have to find out what we can do to put those houses in safely for the rest of the community. If you look to the north, I'm sorry you, I didn't have the GPS picture here, but if you look to the north, there's a road called Parra that's going in with the Ryder Homes and Lanier that's putting house in, and it comes directly into the Donovan land. More than likely, it'll be done before we do anything on the Donovan land. Good part about that, doesn't cost Donovan anything. Bad part, everybody in that community is going to be complaining about it. And they come out to Pyramid, they have to turn left against traffic. Not good. Coming down Horizon View, same problem. You have the whole community complaining because of the extra traffic. The other choice is what Mr. Lacy said, that going south, there's a 20, 19-some acres of land that's owned by Podlock Development. Being a development company, I assume houses are going in there. So if Donovan and those two could get together, people could go south, turn onto Casa La Pata and go to a stoplight. It's much safer going through that intersection at a stoplight. Shadow Ridge did give the county that land between Donovan and the Podlock 19 acres. I'm sure that the county would be happy to give them an easement to go across there for road so that the whole thing can get put together. That would be by far the most logical way of doing it until Pyramid gets upgraded to a four-lane road, we put stoplights in and flowers and everything else. So I hope you take care, do the right thing and go from there. Thank you.
Michael Craig, followed by Stephanie Jennings.
Thank you for listening to me for a second time. Again, thank you Commissioners for letting us voice our opinions here. Two things. Your mission statement up here on the wall is to keep a safe and healthy environment. I think we're, we have overwhelming evidence that says there is a problem north on Pyramid that goes across Egyptian Parkway to the north. It's a two-lane road and, and that's just hazardous. As you said, Bob, you know, when you're talking about this, there's also, as my spreadsheet from the earlier presentation said, there's 40, excuse me, 32 homes already in the build process with the expansion of 42, 4,700 homes going into there. That is a significant change to the dynamics of, of what we're saying. Also, the industrial center has 57 businesses up and running already with the potential of 10 more businesses, meaning those buildings are still in the building phase to be completed by the end of the year. And these are major distribution centers now out in that industrial Parkway. So I, I encourage you, and Bob and, and Mr. Hartung, thank you for, you know, listening to us and, and really identifying some of this problem. As we talk about, you know, the access, we can see that at the top of Horizon Ridge, this is 100 feet back, right? Going to the top stop sign, you're running right into the fence line of my house. I'm the third house up. The easement would go along the pathway right next to the trailer. If we look down from that easement, you're looking down and you're looking straight into somebody else's fence on the other side of the street. This is not an eloquent solution because you have to convert this to a four-way stop. The people coming down from the pit would stop right where that trailer is and have to turn right immediately into a stopped car traffic coming across on Rustic View. So this is not an answer to the problem of getting in and out using Horizon Ridge. We do see an answer coming in from the new development. It's not impactful because they would have to simply eliminate a house, but you can already see that the pit already has an access coming through that would allow to go and link up with the major road going out. And this pit road, or this, this bridge, you want to say, comes off the pit. You can go down maybe 100, 100 yards and you go into this, this land bridge and that could be opened up for, thank you.
Stephanie Jennings, followed by Gwen Reeves.
My name is Gwen Reeves. My husband and I are Shadow Ridge residents and we are strongly against the rezoning of the Donovan pit, along with the other over 380 signed petitioners. Donovan stated that the rezoning would be for one unit per acre, 144 homes total, no more. He also stated that the rezoning is passed, he will sell to a developer. The application states that they will use Horizon View extension. The application states they want to complement Shadow Ridge. We have 390 homes and we're mostly on a third of an acre. The rezon will add more homes as more, as the compliance result says a maximum of five dwellings per acre. We all know a developer will have the ability to revise plans and build more. This is common practice. Mr. Donovan did sell his property and it to Shadow, for Shadow Ridge community. I think the planning should have been a little bit better because Ryder, being the majority member of our LMA Board of Directors last year, gave Donovan an easement across two Shadow Ridge Common Ground Area parcels to make the extension of Horizon View in order to enter Donovan's land. Horizon View is already the only egress and ingress for the Shadow Ridge community. Our community, another new homes north of us, have multi-generation homes. In most cases, that creates three or more vehicles per home. It is already a daily hazardous issue for residents to exit Horizon View and enter Pyramid Highway. Just imagine 1,000 or more home, or cars added to that scenario, plus all the traffic that would go right through the middle of our quiet community. The real nightmare begins when all the approved homes project north of us start using Pyramid for commute. We feel this area can't handle any more approved subdivisions without proper infrastructure first. We feel the appeal still does not meet the requirements for the findings or the regulatory zone amendments. This does create a hazardous, unhealthy and dangerous situation for all the residents that make daily commutes, daily and evening walks with children and pets, kids walking to and from the school bus stop, not to mention any possible evacuation. We purchased our home two years ago because we loved Ryder Homes and it looked as though the building was sticking to the master plan and it was a small, quiet community with neighborhood activity. And we are now surrounded with homes and businesses without proper infrastructure for safe living. Please think of us and our families when you decide and make your decision. Thank you for your time.
Diana Christensen, followed by Dawn Christensen.
I would like to bring forth the last condition I would like to see attached to the rezoning of this property. Out front of our subdivision sits two parcels, parcel one and parcel two, that Mr. Donovan still owns. They are zoned neighborhood commercial. Parcel two consists of a plot B, which consists of the drainage canal and the retention pond, which drain our subdivision, and I'm going to assume will also drain the one that he is requesting. This property has been transferred three times, one time in 2002, one time in 2007, one time in 2014. This plot B has never been transferred to the subdivision which it is draining. Last summer, we had a problem with excessive rain. There was damage to the canal area and it was gouged out. When this was brought to Mr. Donovan's attention, he said that wasn't his problem, that we would have to figure out how to repair it. He was not paying for it. Ryder Corporation tried to take a big step back and the LMA was, we were concerned that what I have seen is that if you aren't the owner, you can't go in and do repairs. So there was a big discussion on who was responsible for this. Mr. Donovan did eventually put some construction fencing around the attractive nuisance where the ground, where the gouge was in order to prevent children from getting hurt on their bikes and so forth. What I would like to see is another one, is that this plot B be transferred to the stakeholders, whomever they may end up being. I'm not sure how many developments he is planning on draining into that retention pond. So I would like that to be looked at also by your staff and so forth to make sure that the users can be the people responsible for maintenance and repair. Thank you.
Dawn Christensen, followed by Chanty Jones.
Again, good afternoon, Commissioners and Madam Chair. I think it's all been said. Again, my wife and I are long-term residents. We were there before Ryder took this thing over. We bought out of a bankruptcy and we've seen a lot of change and it's not all been completely pleasant, but I'm not going to burden you with that. My biggest concern after what's all been said about traffic and everything else is this business about the retention pond. My property is the closest to the haul road without actually being proximate to it. In other words, I'm about 150 feet from the haul road, but I'm, I share a property line with the retention pond. And I watch the waters rise and it does not have the capacity at this point to assume the drainage from the Donovan pit area. We're a dry climate, but things happen. There are 50-year floods, there's 100-year floods, but that despite the fact, this has not been properly engineered and I want to bring the attention to that. Having said all of that, I want to thank particularly Commissioner Hartung for his leadership in, in mitigating the traffic and getting us traffic lights and things like that. And I support the rezoning and development of the, of the pit, but it needs to be conditioned with every possible thing to mitigate traffic and this water problem behind my property. And I leave it to you good folks to do the right thing. There are worse things that could happen to the pit than a development of homes. And I'm not going to go into great detail, but it's already zoned without further permitting. We could have a concrete batch plant or an asphalt batch plant back there without any change at all in the zoning. So yeah, I commend you, you're the professionals, you know what you're doing. I have confidence that if you condition this project.
Thank you. Chanty Jones, followed by Carol Casper. Carol Casper?
Hi. Good afternoon. I'm Carol Casper and I live in Shadow Ridge and, which is also known as Donovan Ranch, which is also known as the Sugarloaf Peak Landscape Maintenance Association. I'd like to call your attention if I could to, I'm sorry, this is, this is a first for me, to page three of the application where it reads, "The lower portion of the Donovan Ranch, Shadow Ridge subdivision is nearing, nearing buildout. This includes construction of the Horizon View Avenue. The residential collector roadway essentially extends to the Western Donovan pit boundary. With development of this adjoining subdivision, easements for access and utility stubs were provided to the pit site." So that's from the application. I'm going to share a picture of our subdivision with you. This, this is Pyramid, this is Horizon View, and over here is our common area. So an access easement was provided to over here, which is the border of the Donovan property, but it was not approved by the LMA or the association or any of the members disclosed to us as buyers. We were not allowed to be involved in the decision-making and to date Ryder Homes still controls 100% of our LMA. So in 2000, in June of 2021, Donovan, I'm sorry, Ryder Homes granted an easement across our common area to Donovan for this project. There was no compensation for this easement to the association. You've seen these pictures, but I'll show them again. This is looking east. By the way, this is the, the construction trailer is there now, but this is the only parking that's in the neighborhood to service the Sugarloaf Peak Trail. This is looking west and this is our common area. And my home happens to be over here. This is where the road will run. This is the easement that will go across our common area. There is the filed easement that was never disclosed to anybody. There was no communication in our association meetings, our quarterly board meetings. There was no emails, there was no snail mails, there was nothing shared with us from, from Ryder Homes, letting us know that they've granted this easement of our common area.
Thank you. Greg Jones, followed by Thomas Scapica. Greg Jones. Thomas Scapica. Sorry, I don't know how to say your last name.
Good afternoon to the Commissioners, the supporting staff, which is doing a lot of work today, and the attendees here. I would like to thank you all for hearing the inputs from the community on this matter and I do recommend that the appeal being, appeal before you today be rejected for the following reasons. I would like to see two safety issues addressed and the commission, various commissions as well as NDOT need to help provide these recommendations. The first is a safety issue regarding the emergency access. If you look at various state codes as well as the International Fire Code as published by the ICC, you do not have current emergency access capabilities for the current Ryder Home facility at Shadow Ridge, let alone an expansion. So I think that safety issue needs to be addressed and there's various proposals today that were talked about. We're putting that in place. So the rejection that I'm recommending is kind of a temporary one. I do agree that eventually it does need to be expanded, but that first safety issue needs to be addressed. The second safety issue is with NDOT in addressing Pyramid Way out there. It's going to take time for lights to be put in place, going to be time for any, take time for any expansion. So maybe the second recommendation is to look at the speed limits, which can be done a little bit faster than some of the other recommendations. Currently, you've got 65 mile an hour speed limit there and you're coming into now residential access areas. That's not very advisable. So maybe this temporary rejection of this appeal can put the planning commissions and the various developers to be working with NDOT to figure out what needs to be done for Pyramid Way before continued expansion be allowed in that area. Thank you.
Diane Craig, followed by Jim Anderson. Diane Craig. Jim Anderson.
This is going to work. Hi, my name is Charles Harkins. Thank you for listening to all of us talk. I'm concerned about all the traffic on Horizon View, if this thing is allowed to go forward. Horizon View goes south, comes into Pyramid. Across the other way is all the industrial area that's been mentioned and the trucks coming out of there make it almost impossible at times to be able to go to the intersection and make a left turn. Traffic has to be addressed there. The other thing is, I know it said that 144 acres, 144 homes. And we, if you go through and you look at all the assessor parcels, most of our houses are a third of an acre. There's a couple large ones that are an acre, there are some that are half acre, but the majority, I would say 85% are a third of an acre. So I think our concern is another developer could come in and increase it to three or four or five houses per acre. Horizon View for trying to escape, if there was an emergency, I think even right now, just with our community, we can count maybe 1,200 vehicles because not every house has one or two vehicles. We have numerous multi-generational homes where the kids are in school, they all have vehicles. One down the street from me has six vehicles and so that would be quite an increase if we did have another community having to come through our street to be able to get down there. Again, the safety, the school buses come in, they stop at these intersections. If we had such a large amount of traffic coming through, that would be somewhat hazardous for the kids that are standing on the corner waiting for the school bus too. So I'd like you to just not allow this rezoning to occur at this time and I agree with the other people that have talked that eventually it's going to happen, eventually something's going to be done and eventually it's going to be built out and that's just the way life is. But at this point, let's look at some other options to make things a little bit safer for all of us. Thank you.
Rick Lancaster, followed by Elisa Lancaster.
I don't know how I'm going to do this. Good afternoon. My name's Rick Lancaster, resident of Shadow Ridge and want to take a moment to thank you for the opportunity to share some of the concerns that we have. We very much enjoy our community and our home. Our son came to visit us a year and a half ago when we moved in. He looked at it and he said, "Dad, Mom, you've got a great house and a beautiful community here. I want you to find a second way out of here though." And I said, "What do you mean?" And he goes, "Well, I should explain. Our son is a 13, 13-year veteran with CAL FIRE, Wildland Fire, strike teams and such. And he also works with the community with property inspections and evacuation plans for property owners in rural areas." He said, "I want you to find a second way out of here because the situation that you're living in right now, you have one access. If you had a wildland fire with a sagebrush around this community and the high winds that this area is known for periodically, you will have spots, spot fires likely occurring within the community and you'll have a situation where you're going to need an emergency evacuation. And there's going to be, I can tell you, there's going to be a backup of traffic at that highway and you need to find a second way out of here," which we did find. However, within the meantime, those, that access has been blocked with split rail fences that have been constructed. So his concern for us is, is finding another way out and it's our understanding that new 30-home developments are required to have two accesses in and out for that purpose and for, at least for ingresses, for first responders. So adding a second development, we have 396 homes in our community, adding a second development to that seems like it would be contrary to current code. I wanted to, if we could, could you come in on this a little bit? Is it possible? Thank you. I appreciate that. This is a photograph from above the pit and this is, you can see there's a triple, triple transporter truck in the upper-left corner. This is the extent of the current excavation that's in there that would need to be, I'm assuming would need to be corrected if this was to become a development. And we're just asking you to please consider what it would be like to be a neighbor of this restoration for as long as it would take to restore this to, into a buildable site. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
My name is Elisa Lancaster and I'm a resident of Shadow Ridge and I've been asked to read the opinion of Diane Craig, who is also a resident of Shadow Ridge, who was called away from this meeting due to time constraints. If I may, I would like to read her opinion as it is written. It says, "Good afternoon Commissioners. I'm requesting that you deny the rezoning of Donovan pit. Ryder Homes did not disclose to us that Horizon View, which is the only, one and only road into and out of Shadow Ridge, that it was going to extend into and across what is currently walking trails behind many of our homes. As a deeply concerned homeowner at Shadow Ridge, I am pleading with you to deny Tom Donovan's request to rezone his property for low-density housing. As previously stated, there is not, there is only one road in and one road out of our development of 390 homes. Currently, Horizon View, the main road, comes at, to a T at the top of Rustic View. Ryder Homes did not divulge that Horizon View was in the master plan back in 2005 for it to be a future through road that would go behind many of our homes, which is currently a walking trail. In fact, when asked if anything was going to be built behind us, the answer was an emphatic no, only a walking trail. This will be a safety and noise issue for our community. If this rezoning goes through, how many years of construction traffic, noise, and dust will we have to endure? Many of us paid a premium price for our lots to have a view and peace and quiet. In April of this year, Tom Donovan and the Christie Corporation held a Zoom meeting with the homeowners, assuring us that there was only going to be 144 homes on one-acre lots. We have 390 homes at Shadow Ridge, which means there's potentially 780 cars accessing one road in and out. It is my understanding that once the developer owns the land, they can put three houses on one acre, which will be 432 homes with a potential of an additional 864 cars coming in and out of one street. So that would be a total of 1,296 cars per day, not only on Horizon View, but on Pyramid Highway as well. Nevada Department of Transportation has no plans to expand Pyramid Highway over the next couple of years. To allow another housing development to be put in would be incredibly irresponsible. The accidents and fatalities will be going up exponentially. How can they not? No, thank you.
Catherine Snedeker, followed by Renee Resentis.
For the record, I'm Catherine Snedeker, a non-person, non-resident, un-entrenched natural woman. So I just love developers. I really do. They come up here and they assure you, "It's only going to be 144 houses, we're not doing anything else," until they sell it and the other developer that comes in says, "You know, I can make that three houses per acre." We have that problem right now in Palomino Valley with Brian Murphy and the specific planned area. It was supposed to be one house per acre. It was supposed to be five-acre parcels. Then he got it down, lowered to one-acre parcels, wanted to put three houses per acre on there with one acre of open space in the middle of properties that surround that area that are 40-acre parcels. We have no traffic in Palomino Valley. Traffic is at least 80 cars going in and out. We don't have any traffic, but it's miserable with those people there, very miserable. They think they're in Sparks. They drive up and down our very badly maintained roads like they're on the highway. You're going to have the same thing with this. Developers are going to say, "Oh, but we sold it to them, our plan was this, but we sold it to them and we can't do, tell them what they're going to do." And you're going to see all kinds of expansions that nobody wants. And of course, you're not doing anything about the roads because that costs you money. But putting in these houses, you make money and that's why there's nothing being done on the highway. And there's going to be more accidents, more rear-end collisions, and people just going to take that chance and beat that car because of all the traffic. And 1,200 cars is a lot of traffic going out from one road. 400 cars is a lot of traffic coming out from one road, but you don't care because you're in it for the housing money. Forget the people's safety, which you have a fiduciary obligation to protect. Your fiduciary obligation is not just about money, it's also about the health, safety, and welfare of the government because that's your primary job. And when you ignore that in favor of developers, well then you've abandoned your office and our, as our representatives and you're acting strictly as another corporate entity doing business with developers. Good job!
Hello again, Renee Resentis. Please put this on the record. I drive out from Palomino Valley into town quite often and the traffic is even getting bad out there. Turning onto, from Pyramid Highway to Winnebago Road is a very, very tight turn. There's more traffic coming and people don't want to slow down behind you. But anyway, I was driving to town a few days ago and it is a two-lane highway and there was a car passing two other cars and coming straight for me and it didn't look like he was, he could slow down and get around them and those two cars that he was passing didn't slow down and they were, he was literally coming towards me and we were going to have a head-on collision. I had to hit my brakes and I actually had to stop. I was doing 68, you know, 65 and I actually had to stop on Pyramid Highway to prevent the collision. So this two-lane highway and the way people drive and lack of courtesy and nowhere to go when you're on that one lane, you can't move over because there's no other lane there. You just, you just can't. So it's very, very dangerous. So we do not need more building out there until all of these kinks are worked out. It's too dangerous. So, thank you.
Madam Chair, there was nobody else signed in, in chambers? Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Okay. And then I do have seven emails that were sent. And then I do have seven emails that were sent in, including the petition, for the record.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. Do we have any board members who would like to ask any questions or say anything or propose a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner, or, excuse me, Chairman Hartung.
Commissioner is fine. So, I mean, you've, you've all, you all know that I've lived in this valley for many years, not anywhere near the number of years that the Donovans have, but 35 is still a good amount of time. I know the Donovans well. I've known Mr. Donovan's family for many years. And he is truthful when he says that they thought that the pit would go away 10 or 12 years ago. I have had to defend this pit to be there. It's not been easy. Defend its right, as well as the original Rocky Ridge, now Martin Marietta Pit that's across the valley. It has always been an issue for us. Let's talk about Pyramid Highway. I've lost track of the number of times that I have asked NDOT to widen Pyramid Highway. And by the way, the speeds going through here, all the way out to the end of the valley, just north of Caillada La Plata, are 65 miles an hour. So it's, I mean, people are traveling fast, which means that the average speed is probably closer to 70, 75, and maybe even upwards of that. It's a, it's definitely a dangerous stretch of road. So I have deep concerns with that. I'd like to talk a minute about Ryder's nondisclosure. It concerns me, but that's not what we're here to talk about today. That's a civil issue. I know some people mentioned that they paid lot premiums. Again, those are issues that they'll have to take up with Ryder. Those are not things that are in our purview. We can't stop something just because someone promised a lot premium that may or may not be truthful. I will tell you, I have deep concerns with several things. The size of Horizon View and the, and the way that it was constructed. Already, they have 390 homes, which equates to 3,900 trips per day. 10 ADTs are what the average, that, to my understanding, that's what we've always used is 10 ADTs per household. Horizon View should have, back in the day, been conditioned with a light, but it was I'm also concerned with the fact that this is a pit. And drainage is going to be a problem. I don't know how we get water out of a pit. So there's, I have, I have some, some real deep concerns. I asked the applicants to delay until we could come up with some possible solutions within Gress Egress, talked to NDOT about the use of the Hall Road. Perhaps there's ways to the north with the Harris Ranch subdivision. Perhaps there's ways to the south. But even though I know that this is just a land use change, there are some real concerns for me with respect to how this could potentially be developed. So at this time, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let some other commissioners jump in and ask a few questions, but I'm, I'm, I'm just having a very difficult time until many of these questions get answered. And, and I know that, that the promise has always been, well, they'll be answered at tentative map. Well, our system is, is, it has many issues. And I forgot one other thing. I happen to live on an LDS parcel. I actually live on an acre and a third, a true acre and nearly a third. Somewhere along the way, and I don't know when this happened, we decided to lot average whereby we would take land that was constrained for whatever reason, and we would say, well, you know, we'll just take the whole entire parcel and then we'll average these number of lots. I have a real problem with that. I, you know, LDS should be LDS. It should, should be 43,560 square feet. But we've, we've gotten away with that. So I, I think, I think that, that it's a little disingenuous on our part when we start planning these areas and we say, well, it's LDS. Now, I have problems even to the north with, with Harris Ranch and, and to the south with the Blackstone subdivisions. I have issue. That's the way we do things now, but I have issue with that. So I'll, I'll yield my time, Madam Chair, and let some other commissioners step in and make comments.
Thank you. I see Commissioner Herman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner, and Hartung has covered almost everything I was going to cover that I was suggest, what I was going to suggest, a delay and, and get some of these things ironed out. Maybe set some timeframes for certain infrastructure before construction could start, these sort of things. And I feel that we need to kind of maybe go back to the drawing board just a little bit on this one. So I would agree with Commissioner Hartung about those items like that. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, if folks had listened to our earlier public hearing, you'll, you've probably heard that zoning really determines the use and the destiny of projects. And I have, I personally have serious concerns keeping it at the current zoning and master plan, just because I, I worry that an industrial space, especially a pit right next to a residential space, is not safe. And I think that if this master plan and zoning were to be approved today, I think there would be more of an impetus to speak to NDOT about these infrastructure improvements. Right now, there are no homes projected, so I think that it will help us. We can also ask for the developer to pay for a lot of these things. And I know that staff is listening to a lot of the input from the community on how best to permit this moving forward. Obviously, there's a lot more steps than just the master plan and zoning, but I just don't feel that it's right to keep it the way it is. And I think that this will be worked out through the staff process. So I'm, I'm happy to grant the appeal today. And, and I'd like to hear from other commissioners to see if there's any other comments or motion that commissioners want to make.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Lucy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to say, first of all, thank you to all the public commenters that came and shared their concerns in regards to the project and the rezoning today. I understand the concerns, and I share a multitude of the concerns with the community in regards to the traffic and safety of the utilization of Horizon Hills. It's in, in and out for Egress. However, what I would say, and I would also follow Commissioner Hill's comments, and Chairman Hartung has been, I want to thank Chairman Hartung for his diligent work to improve Pyramid Highway, all along the highway from I-80 all the way out to Palomino Valley. He has, he has tried and worked in, in continuous meetings with NDOT to signalize and improve Pyramid. And NDOT has been less than responsive, to the point of not responsive to our pleas. Now, inevitably, this is very similar to many of the developments in District Two, one specifically, Grandview Estates. Grandview Estates was built to the top of the Leslie Lane, initially in the first phase, and was not forecasted to be developed any further at any time. Then the extension of Grandview Road allowed for the addition of another 400 homes back on a singular road access, which makes for a challenging commute. And at the, at the look, or just the understanding of the numbers, it does seem to be daunting and overwhelming. But since that development has been built out and completed, we haven't seen the massive impacts that was initially thought to be forecast, that they just have never become, come to fruition. I, I feel that today, a lot of potential solutions, if a development were to go forward, and we are, as you pointed out, just talking today in regards to the issue presented in front of us, in regards to zoning, rezoning the property, not approving a tentative map, no development or, has been, has been projected. There are options in regards to fire access and, and whatnot in regards to the Hall Road, which is currently owned by the Donovan Corp. I believe to Chair Hartung's discussion about potential access into the Harris Ranch through Alamosa Road, is it potential to connect to the properties that way? There are potentials to connect with the, and add secondary access, true secondary access, not emergency access, but true secondary access to the south across Washoe County property and another, other available properties. I'm in support of the rezoning. I believe that the reclamation of the pit in this area is a paramount situation that needs to occur. And the only way to do that is to rezone that pit to allow for growth in residential housing. And as we've said before at this commission, infrastructure does not precede development. Development precedes infrastructure, and infrastructure will follow. And to strengthen the argument of improving the Pyramid Corridor, improving signalization at either Horizon or Alamosa will be increased, and that argument will be strengthened with the addition of the potential development. I believe that the industrial park across the road, Pyramid Highway, on ingenuity, is not completely built out and has the potential of reverse commuting to and from for individuals that may live in the area and work in the area. I think this is a viable solution and a potential. I see this as a benefit, not a negative. And sometimes at the outset, a lot of these developments look negative, but often bring more solutions than they do problems. And so I believe that this truly will add that safety. It will add the ability for that reverse commute if, in future years, and, and address the infrastructure needs that, with the demand, will follow based upon those availabilities. So those are my comments, Madam Chair, and I am in support of the rezoning issue today.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the board or folks who want to take us to have a motion?
Well, Madam Chair, I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion, but it's not going to be the motion that you and Commissioner Lucy are willing to support. I would make the motion, I would move to deny the appeal as listed in the staff report and uphold the Planning Commission's decision as listed on page eight of our staff report.
Okay. A motion has been made. Any seconds? A second by Commissioner Herman. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All those opposed, please say nay. Nay.
Nay.
Great. Okay. So it looks like the motion fails, two to three. So I'm not hearing any other, I'm, I'm happy to make a motion to try to get this item going. I move to grant the appeal and reverse the Planning Commission's decision as listed in the staff report. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you so much for, all of the community for coming out. And we will work with our staff to make this a great project and ensure that infrastructure is put forward in the future. Thank you. Okay. Next up, we actually just ended our scheduled public hearings. Next up, we will take public comment, item 15. Mr. Manager, can you please take us into that?
Yes. Item 15 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We do. We have Barb Fenney. Looks like she's gone.
For the record, Catherine Snediger, a non-person, non-resident, unenfranchised, natural woman. You people are out of your minds. I really hope you choke on your dinner today. Because what you do to the people that pay you and voted for you to represent them is disgusting. You don't represent the people. You don't represent any of the men and women that came in here today. You represent the developers, and you prove it every freaking time anything goes on. You come in here with a predetermined outcome, and that's how it goes. You're a bad, evil people. You shut down businesses and caused families to go distress and, and into bankruptcy, and their kids are going crazy because you shut down the entire county and called those businesses unessential, nonessential businesses. The only thing nonessential is you. No government has the authority to shut down a business for more than 30 days. You did a taking of every single business in this county. And you know what? They get to sue you, like the guy in the bar, because you acted outside your authority, you acted outside what was legal, and you acted outside what was lawful. And you're taking our money, and you're sitting up here and you're doing stuff you shouldn't be doing. And this slush fund, $150,000 for, oh my God, they were threatening me. We didn't see one bit of evidence of anybody that was threatened. We didn't see one bit of evidence where there was a nasty phone call or an email saying, I'm going to kill you. We didn't see anything. This was all to protect Kate Thomas. And you know what? It's not going to work. You don't have the authority to set a fund, aside funds for people who lose their cases and want to get reimbursed for their attorney fees and costs. You don't get to do that. And you know what? You don't have the authority to do it. And I'm going to prove it to you. Get ready.
Since there's nobody else in chambers, there's nobody else to speak.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Now we'll go into item 16, Mr. Manager.
Seeing as commissioners, county managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards, commissions, updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas. And Madam Chair, I have nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Do we have any other comments from commissioners?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you. I wanted to thank the commission for covering, and you, this morning especially, for covering me while I was out getting some medical procedures done. I will be out for a couple of weeks. I just want to thank everyone. I'm going to take a medical leave and, and deal with a few things, but I just want to thank everyone for the time that they, they've spent to, to cover my boards and commissions. And that's it.
Well, take care of yourself, Chair Hartung.
It's all good. Thank you.
Yes. And any other commissioners want to speak? I don't think so. All right. Well, with that, we will adjourn the meeting, and thank you, everyone, for your time. Well, with that, we will adjourn the meeting, and thank you, everyone, for your time.